Okay, saludos, saludos.
Manier luz and manier now, half a day, then don't come to the city, so is my assy, but if not to me too. Go for good days, see, then who mit this, and I'm gonna get you.
We're going to begin. This is my see. The Committee on Culture and Justice is now called to order. Today's Friday, March 17, 2017. The time is 9:08. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on March 9, 2017, and again on March 14, 2017. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on March 10, 2017, and in the Pacific Daily News from March 14 through March 16. On our agenda today, we have two items: Resolution Number 51, introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Terlai, relative to supporting that the government of Guam move forward to appeal the ruling of the District Court of Guam to assist in defending the rights of the native inhabitants of Guam. Resolution Number 52, introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Terlai, relative to supporting that the government of Guam not enter into a consent decree without approval of the Guam Legislature and the governor of Guam regarding the recent threatened lawsuit proposed by the United States Department of Justice over the Chamorro Land Trust Act. I would like to thank my colleagues for attending this morning's hearing. To my right, I have the vice chairman, vice chairperson of my committee, Senator Talina Nelson. Senator Frank Uggan. Senator Will Castro. Senator Rajine Bisco Lee. Senator Mary Torres. Senator Fernando Estevas. Senator James Estrada. And Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you all for being here. I very much appreciate your presence. I'd like to thank the public for attending this morning's hearing. I'm sorry. Oh, oh gosh, I'm so sorry. Senator Mike Sinicalis. Before we begin with the testimony, I would like to go over the protocol for those who will be testifying. I'd like to ask first that everyone remain seated until their names are called. Once you've been called to the table and acknowledged to begin your testimony, I'm asking that you remain seated during your testimony, that you limit your testimony to five minutes to ensure that we have enough time for everyone. If you'd like to provide more testimony, we will give you more time afterward, everyone has testified like in a second round, okay? Now, the senators are all here because we want to hear from you, so we are going to give you all the respect that we can, and we just ask the same from you for all of my colleagues that are here, please. Thank you. Okay, so on the first panel, I'd like to ask those who have signed up, I'm going to read your names, so please come up and testify.
Madam Chair, may I just request a brief point of order? In the ruling on the Davis case, part of what was brought up was the official record of what was stated during some government proceedings. And I'm just a little concerned that if we make similar statements in the course of this resolution, that it might be actually used against the case in any potential appeal. And so if I could request respectfully that perhaps I see Attorney Phillips in the audience, or if the Attorney General's representative is present, if an attorney can first come and speak to maybe any kind of guidance we can get as to what may or may not be put on the record that might be used against the case in the future. Because when I read the case, they did put transcripts in there about certain statements that were made that was used to reinforce the argument of the opposition. So if we could perhaps get some very clear legal clarification on what may or may not be a risk. Madam Chair.
I don't see a representative of the Attorney General here. I don't know if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to address that, but I don't know the answers.
Okay, then if I could just clarify, then Madam Chair, that way at least everyone will have in mind what I'm talking about. In the ruling on the Davis case, they specifically use the fact that we spoke about this needing to be for specifically Chamorro people, that they used that as the grounds to rule, partly, that was part of what they use as the grounds to rule against the people of Guam. And so if we testify today that this needs to happen for Chamorro people, and it comes out looking like that's all that it's for, they will take these transcripts and use it in the appeal. And the purpose of this resolution is to actually support an appeal. So I just want to make sure that we are careful, because we don't want to actually undermine the very case that a lot of us are here to support today. Okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinicalis. That is correct, that comments by elected officials and the public were cited in the decision. And that's a good caution. I'm going to very briefly read the resolved clauses of this Resolution 51, just for the record and for those who are watching. Resolved that Imina Trenta Quachuna, Lejesla Tur in Guahan, does hereby, on behalf of Iles La Tur in Guahan and the people of Guam, support that the government of Guam move forward to appeal the ruling of the District Court of Guam to assist in defending the rights of the native inhabitants of Guam. And be it further resolved that the speaker and the Legislative Secretary attest to the adoption of hereof, and that copies be transmitted to the Honorable Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, Attorney General of Guam, and to the Honorable Edward J.B. Cavill, Imane La Hingua. Okay, for the record, we've received in advance written testimony from Dr. Robert Underwood, and I believe copies of those are available for anyone who might wish a copy, from Jamela Santos, from Dr. Elizabeth Bowman, and from Ned Pablo. I would like to call up former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson, Rudolph Villaverde, Bob Pelkey, Harold Cruz. It says Babauta. I'm not sure if you wish to have, give some oral testimony? Saina Offing? Do you wish to give oral testimony? Okay, you may have a seat. If I've called your name, you may have a seat up on the, with the microphones. Magelan? Paget? Magelahin Paget? Oh, okay, so let me repeat. Vice Speaker Ted Nelson? Okay. This is my see. Rudolph Villaverde, Bob Pelkey, Harold Cruz. It just says Babauta, Saina Offing, Magelahin Paget. Vicente Garido. Enrique Torres. Rambo Beneventi? I'm so sorry, Boombo. I just said that. Nervous, I'm nervous. Just joking. Okay, and Attorney Mike Phillips? Is there still space?
I would like to begin by reading the letter of Dr. Robert Underwood into the record. Dear Vice Speaker Terlai, March 16, 2017. I'm writing you to alert you about the maximum danger point which the Chamorro people face today. I could write about my passion for the Chamorro or the Chamorro Land Trust, which is also being threatened, but I want to draw your attention to the matter of Chamorro self-determination. This is the inflection point of not just the continued existence of the Chamorro people, but a test of whether we understand Guam's unique history. Ultimately, it is a question of respect for the Chamorro people. As a longtime history teacher, I warn students to avoid thinking that history began when they came along or when they started thinking about it. History is a long and frequently tortured story. Acting on the political status future for Guam is a historical project that belongs to the Chamorro people and goes back several centuries. It is an attempt to understand the past, inform the present, and fuel the future. It isn't a future project. It is a connective project based on the principles of respect and inafat maulek. People who migrated to Guam in the past three decades bought their assumptions about their own past and their own future, primarily in terms of American jurisprudence and authority. I do not contest that, nor do I seek to deny them that point of view. I only ask that they understand that the Chamorro people are the ones that have historically been colonized, and they deserve the opportunity to decolonize their homeland. I ask them, just as I remind fellow Chamoros, that the native people of Guam had their own unique experience that continually kept them from exercising the right to make a political decision on their own terms with various options available to them. The legal authorities have recently spoken. The U.S. District Court in Guam has stated that it is not constitutionally permissible to allow a vote of Chamorro self-determination even if it was not binding. It is dispiriting and discouraging, although not unexpected. Ironically, opponents of Chamorro self-determination appealed to an entirely different set of historical circumstances: American law, constitutional amendments coming out of the American Civil War, Supreme Court decisions designed to place territories in a perpetual colonial status in order to defeat the Chamorro historical experience. In the American legal battlefield, they prevailed, but while the battle may have been lost, the struggle continues. We have been at this low point before. I present to you a copy of a document prepared by the Organization of People for Indigenous Rights from 1982. In the document, you will read a clear statement about Guam's history. You will see familiar names like Bernadita Dunca, Clotilde Gould, B.J. Cruz, Ron Tejan, Nerissa Lee, Marie Pablo, Al Lizama, Chris Paris Howard, Rosa Palomo, and Hope Christovo. These individuals provided Guam the opportunity to reflect upon Guam's past and future and the existence of Chamorro self-determination. They were derided and belittled. They were called half-breeds, told that they were inauthentic Chamoros, and questioned because they weren't even Chamorro. I can speak from personal experience that members of the Guam Legislature at that time avoided us, except for a handful. We didn't wring our hands, and we were not disrespectful to anyone. We simply presented our case. The case is still the same. In many ways, the opposition arguments sound painfully similar. I ask you to take the time to read the document and learn about the political status development of Guam. I ask you to pursue a strategy that honors and respects the Chamorro people in the quest for self-determination. I believe that it is possible to do so without the compromise of multicolored ballots or simply treating it as another election. I will be happy to discuss any concern about Chamorro self-determination that you may have. I will be happy to discuss alternative strategies. At a minimum, we must continue the struggle in the U.S. Courts and the United Nations. These are not necessarily the venues that will resolve the issue, but they are the venues which are currently available to us. Viva el tal tanu, viva Guahan. See Robert Underwood.
Bob Pelkey, you may begin.
And para todo, iman tal tal tanu. Napara bain, fanatsu, para de de sota. Resolution 51, 34, and para eu, resolution 52, 34. Mandaba na it pongo, kumu un hinano. Giun sakman, giun thalan, zan kumu un tal tal wis. Namun nga hit bang un fudmi. Zata kontra, depa tamet, nus tashan, nus tawus, nidos. Napara ma omu ri, ni man ya inata, ni man na ita tanu, gini ni man ya inata. Haga si zota. Soo goo goo, ta tigian shonu, na temputa no ta esti. Hami ni inenul la hingua han, manata tsuan. Ni resolution 51, 34, zan 52, 34, nata kontra, edisio nikotin, nis litu. Guahan para u defendi, de de sota, ita no ta, gini ni asai na zuu sota. Para todo iman tal tal tanu, ni man malo fanantis, pongo, zan man mamayla. Man i hita, man acu mona, ta fanatsu todo, ta fanogi za moru. Zan be faisi namzu po'gu na sentu onu sesti inenul la Hinguahon, zan be ga'ganzu na inkumplasi zan night mars di singku minutus pa be napunau zan ni testimonio ku. Sa'au loke na be quintus gi finu niha Estados Unidos. Estigi gi finu England Tapa, Engliatera, Madam Chair and members of the Guam Legislature. My name is Bob Pelkey. I am the President of the Young Men's League of Guam, that today marks the exact day and month of 100 years ago, when the Young Men's League of Guam was legally incorporated on Guam. I am here on behalf of the League and all those who've come before me in the past 100 years of our rich history, as the region's oldest and only Chamorro fraternity, in order to register not just our support for the Guam Legislature's efforts to appeal the decision of the United States District Court on Guam, as well as to thwart any threats against our Chamorro nation, foreign or domestic, but also to enter into the record of the League's affirmation of the rights of the Chamorro people and all other indigenous peoples throughout the world. My brothers and here are here to remind anyone and everyone listening that the indigenous Chamorro people have suffered from historical injustices spanning centuries, and that the ruling by the U.S. District Court of Guam is yet another straw upon the back of our colonized people. Further, the threat by the United States Department of Justice is but a splinter in the eyes of our people who toyo' day in and day out to sustain a living, to live in peace, to marry, love, and raise a family free of political interference and imperial oppression. To the former, the issue of our Chamorro right to self-determination. The United States, through its military, suppressed our language and our culture in its early occupation of our island. Worse, the regime of the time dictated how we should speak and dress. The naval leadership at that time went so far as to spread one's desire to whistle, walk at night, or celebrate the feast of a patron saint, or, as the League can attest firsthand during its inception, to freely congregate. And yet, we are here 117 years later, and the same United States, only this time through another separate branch of government, chooses to further suppress our right to self-determination, an inherent right as we see it, granted to us not by man or any government, but by our Creator, God Himself. The right to self-determination is in conformance with international law, and is acknowledged and affirmed by the United Nations, whose charter and resolutions advocate for the fundamental importance of indigenous peoples to freely determine their political status and pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. Madam Chair and members of Guam's Legislature, from the onset of ocean travel that enabled other peoples to visit the Marianas, we, as a Chamorro people, have always welcomed our guests. As history is our witness, the annals of rich with evidence and historic account that we are a strong and loving and generous people. The fine qualities of people, achievements, and practices of our great Chamorro nation were known by some for hundreds of years, since foreigners were first able to record subs-observations in their books using their languages. But it's important to note that what we recently observed is what has been deeply held and widely practiced within our great Chamorro nation for thousands of years. My point, our people's love and hospitality was freely given, and we never took from our guests. This is true then, and it is true today. Unfortunately, what was true then remains true today in terms of how the United States has historically treated its overseas occupied territory of Guam. What was true in the Spanish-American War was true in World War I and in World War II. It's as true as the recent U.S. District Court decision last week, some 70 years following the war. As the world becomes smaller and international affairs become more tightly interwoven and well-curated in the media, educational materials, monetary exchanges, and court systems, has our more perfectly forming union learned nothing since? My point again, the only lesson we've derived from the United States' decision is that our people's love, hospitality, and patriotism is freely given, yet the United States continues to take and take and take and take. They took our lands. They stripped us of our culture. They diluted our identity, and now they are attempting to take away the one-given, God-given right, to freely decide for ourselves what we, as such Chamorro people, would like to do for ourselves and for our families, devoid of imperial political interference. We may decide to become a part of the Union with all the rights and privileges pertaining thereto. We may decide to become independent, yet freely associate. Whatever path it is, let us choose. Let a people who have never had the right to determine their past, their path for the past 400 years, a period of time spanning the Spanish conquests on through a century of American imperialism, have one opportunity to exercise the right to choose how they would like to live out their lives. Madam Chair and members of Guam's Legislature, now to the latter. The threat of the United States Department of Justice against our people for using our lands. The League finds it ironic that the Department of Justice has issued a written statement expressing its concern for certain alleged injustices about how the people of Guam, through its governing structures, have decided to use government lands when, in fact, it should be chiefly concerned with how the United States itself has ill-acquired native lands, thereby dispossessing an indigenous people for well over half a century. The League finds it ironic that the U.S. Department of Justice has issued a written statement expressing its concern for certain alleged justice injustices carried out by the people of Guam, when, in fact, there is a litany of historical injustices by the United States upon our natural resources, environment, and our people. It is our opinion that such crimes against humanity and crimes against the environment may perhaps make for a more effective use of limited federal resources on issues that have greater implications throughout America, most especially upon our brothers and sisters in other United States possessions. Madam Chair and member again of Guam's Legislature, the League stands with you in pushing back against the United States on these debased inconsequential charges against the Chamorro people and on our use of our Chamorro lands. To everyone and anyone listening, the League sees it fit to remind the world that the Chamorro people were dispossessed of their lands and resources, which prevented our people from furthering themselves. Prior to the imperial conquest of our island, we were self-governing. There was trade, healthcare, education, recreation, and defense for ourselves. Consistent with colonial conquest, with the occupation of our island by the United States, came the possession of our lands without our consent for the purpose of war. Following war, when the United States military no longer saw a need to use our entire island to barracks their soldiers, store their tanks, or launch as many of their squadrons from Guam, they return what they deemed excess properties to the local government. For the record, what may have been deemed excess by the occupying nation has always been deemed as sufficient and necessary for use and for standards, for it was upon these lands and in these streams and springs and from these ocean waters that we raised livestock, harvested crop, caught our shrimp and fish, drank our water, washed our bodies, and recreated with our families. Madam Chair and members of Guam Legislature, the League finds it ironic that a representative from the United States Department of Justice Civil Rights Division finds suit that the Chamorro Land Trust Act discriminates on the basis of race or national origin in violation of the Fair Housing Act by limiting certain housing-related benefits to persons who are native Chamoros. What of the Navy and Air Force lands and military housing? Are we the original landowners and native Chamoros not being disunited against, based on our race, and prohibited access to such lands, housing, and natural resources? It is the League's opinion that it's not an issue of housing. It was never their land. In closing, the Young Men's League of Guam is in support of the Guam Legislature's consideration to pass Resolution 51 and 52. Further, the Young Men's League of Guam further imparts this message to this body in your quest to preserve, protect, and advance the interests of the Chamorro people. Let us fight together or apart, but let us fight for the same noble reasons and against our common enemy, oppression, and in all its forms. Let us not fight each other because the paths we choose are different. If we must, let us take a different path, but may it be always towards the same goal. Biba Chamoru!
Sidos maasi, Bob Pelkey, and Tantori YMLGL members, and congratulations on your 100th year anniversary. Thank you for being here. Next call, Attorney Mike Phillips? Okay, so Harold Cruz?
Yes. Honorable Madam Chair and members of the 34th Guam Legislature. For the record, as a native inhabitant of Guam and a Chamorro, I hereby submit my testimony in support of Resolution 51 and 52. Madam Chair and all members, I roll up my sleeves and I ask you to do the same. Now is the time to fight. The naval inhabitants and their descendants are tired of being marginalized. The District Court of Guam, in my opinion, has no business interfering and meddling with Guam's decolonization process. It is my opinion that Judge Frances Tadinco-Gatewood's recent ruling in civil case 10035-17 shows a grave disrespect and insult to the United Nations General Assembly that all territories have a right to self-determination. It is my opinion that Judge Tadinco-Gatewood's ruling failed her fiduciary responsibility to fully interpret the Constitution and the laws fairly and impartially. We strongly believe that Judge Tadinco-Gatewood's ruling was in itself racially and politically biased. Madam Chair, Judge Tadinco-Gatewood failed the test. She failed to ask the most fundamental question: Does equal protection under the Fourteenth Amendment protect everyone? My answer, and the answer can be found in the U.S. Supreme Court ruling, equal protection may not protect everyone equally. We have the God-given right to self-determination and to determine our political status. We have been oppressed and under colonial occupation for over 300 years. Now is the time to fight to become a sovereign people. It is the wisdom and vision of the late Senator Paul J. Baudilio, former Senator Hope Cristovo, Chamorro rights activists like Ron Rivera, and the late Ed Beneventi, the late Senator Angel Leon Guerrero Santos, former Governor Paul M. Calvo, former Governor Joseph F. Adda, and our current Magalahi Eddie Baza Calvo, just to name a few. just to name a few. But all these names can be found in the First Legislative Commission Political Status, 1973 to 1974, and the Second Special Commission Political Status, in 1975 and 1976. The list goes on. Thousands have declared and have committed to asserting their rights as Chamoros to become a sovereign nation, a great Chamorro nation, as you heard previously Mr. Bob Pelkey mention. Now is the time to fight. It's time to fight for the injustices imposed upon our people. Now is the time to fight in our struggles. Let's continue to fight where organizations like OPIR and the Chamorro Nation, whose president here today, left off. The fight for the return of federal excess lands, which come in thousands of acres, true liberation, the ability to control our own immigration, fishing laws, free trade, just to name a few. Now is the time to fight to let our federal counterparts know that we will settle for nothing less than partners, and they don't own us. Now is the time to fight to control our destiny. Let's not give up the fight against unfunded mandates and discriminatory federal court rulings. Let's continue this fight to decide our own political status without outside interference, a decision that should be made by the native inhabitants of Guam, people like me, Chamorro, Chamoru. We thank Mr. Arnold Davis for his service to the United States and his service to Guam while serving in the United States Air Force. However, Mr. Davis will only be that one thing: a welcome visitor and a colonizer. The injustices and sufferings must stop now. Our manancus are dying shackled and mouths taped. Now is the time to fight for our children's future. It's time to set them free. In closing, I share a famous quote by the late Angel Leon Guero Santos, the most prolific Chamorro rights activist in our era. And it goes like this: "We cannot be passive or silent when human beings endure sufferings or humiliation. We must step forward and take sides. At times, we may make mistakes, but we must never make the mistake of failing to try. People deserve nothing less." We join you in this fight. We will fight along each and every one of you. Fanoghi Chamoru, Biba Chamoru, Dankulu Sisus Maasi, dan put respect to Guam, Si Harold Cruz. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Harold. Sanofi?
Buenas, mananas, sisus, para ndu todu we na hulu. Utungana, no, ma, supaguna, mes, no, ba, ibaha ninmebu para ndu todu we na hulu. Antispan bisangan, afab bisangan, saman nogi fan, da tachogi fan esti ni fresi, sa ginin hi, krisonta esti, dan iti fan nogi chamoru. Angin nin tingo, ini fresi, ginin mastakilo, ginin esoko, imastakilo, ki kura somu, dan imas figu, nasinahu, uwa fresi, maesezu, bai potei, zaudefendi, i lingwai, i katura, i lingwai, i ai, i han, dan itano chamoru. Ninu esoko, diretu ginin azu, usta ta, esti uwa fitmi, ki hilufi, dan ibindarahu, ibadendera Guam, viaba chamoru. Mananas, sisus, para handu, mananahu, dan manilohu. Inano si sananofing Jackson, ya sugaw si danin Jackson, Guamui secretaria inashon chamoru, dan hungan inashon chamoru ginini maga haga si Catherine Macalum, dan si Magalahe si danin Jackson, inapreba esti na resolution. Dankulu na saina Maasi, saman hujun handu, jen tetekwistee. Hungan diretusti para hita gi taatautano, inisotastigi ginin sinaata, your ancestors is wellu, dan igwela, sinana, dan tata. Haga smagotestigi paaguna sita, paagutapa mananu. Oki, da tachoguistee, ibidaniya si se taata sanhizu. Afana para hita, bulu alconstitucional. Kiri zi fishing rights, Public Law 29.27. Masangan talugi, oh, i edzu, unconstitucional. Afana para hita, gini kita nohta, bulu unconstitucional. Ta dza mitata constitution. I constitution, marakano esti, ai ti hita. Ti hita, tu man ma, tu komono, di sinau, si taatau, si wellu, dan si wella. Tu man oholo, gitzi, dan niya, gi ma niya, gi uro, rama, xamana. Pafo manogu, zapo maswein, na gi, gi organi, ah! Tu ma tchogu, gi organi, ka para hita, para taata sanhizu. Ai ti para hita. Angin nin ga, tai te gi, ganak ak, ak, jen ak, sa prewa, dan i constitution niya. Afu dota rights, gi constitution, ta dza. Tu sinahi, man, wata, docno, gi delegado, delegare, ta dza dota rights, wu, kwentus galu. Ta dza dota rights, sa du tafafan, wata presidenti. Afu duna constitution, constitution bodi. Para sia edzu, ai ti para hita gi taatautano, ta dza dota constitution. Isata constitution, ini fresi, fanoghi chamoru, contra. Ma ra paagutata fancontra, ma ra paagutata tchogu esti. Afu ne esti na tauto, si Dave Davis. Afagui, dan itani man chamoru, ma lung tachogu, ya fa malago niya. Si Gatewood, abida gui, za, to, lasta ma, chamoru, Tadinco taata chalampogu, printesso, atogu gui. Mungi chamoru, gini nahaga, mungi, mungi. Dinanti si Harold, si Harold, neji, ofisi District Court of Guam. To Davey, si District Court of Guam, ga gi, gini kita nohta. Man oholo, ni protesta, uhu, hunu, ginagali, na man oholo, man mangagi, gi, na man protesta. Man ma nogi, senmenani District Court of Guam, mama dula. Angin ga gi gui, tubi madula, sentu afab bisangan, tan no esti, haji handu. Ko ba tu ma gi si, i presidenti ni du, zamanak yanjunatano. Ta dza, ta dza, gini tanu ni du, man, man basta, man man duli, tanu, ti tanu ni du. Manu, umba, para izi, hisiyasi building. Masangan ni, ta de, zapan, si, tabi hujung, gui, se tanu niya. Tu mogi, ju, za, haji handu. Mungi, ba, mungi, tanu ni du. Ga gi, i, i salat, gini kita Guam. Ga gi, i building, gini kita Guam. Angin ne, ni du natano, ni du, esti, pestuli, ka, ga, i Guam, jen pegawat gi Amerika. Afu ne, malek, si gajun, lekna, esti kita na Guam. Tuli edda, axay edda, gi gu ma ni du. Omexa gi alun tanu, jon ngi, to pa, pa Americanu, or pa chamoru. Tuli edda, bi da hujung, sa bulatu, ginini sina. Usapati, inapati, esti resolution, dan esti ginini Chamorro Land Trust, to du du. Ma dik sa mama nogi, da tachoguistee, da basta hit, mama, da ta contra, esti shana bibidaw, gini bapa tchogu, gini kita nohta. Saman ga gi, sinaata, gi paaguna ora, paaguna, mama mentu. Ni man motai, mama, ateni papa. Mama bibidashagi, si gawa sangan, mama bibidashagi alun, atuhut. Tu sinahi, ngi, itatau, taw niya, dan ga gi, gi ni naman, ekenu. Best na diretusti, Vice Speaker, saina Maasi, esti, i, undanu, esti, zamanah hunu, ni taatau, handu ni man chamoru, faman nogi. Enough is enough. It's time, it's time to para hita, esti na diritet, na, na papit, pai famagonta, dan ifamaguon, ni manaktati. Asui famagoni du, asui neta, neta, dan inetu, dan inetu shap, asu. Adi man ga gi, gisanteteta. Esti, pantu nabunilus, dogu takano, pantu nabrens, manglu takano, na ipaagu famagonta, inetu, dan ineta. Saina Maasi, talu, esti, dan Biba Chamoru.
Saina Maasi. I would like to also recognize the presence of Senator Joe Son Augustine. Santigorido? Harold, can you press the button on that? Thank you very much.
Buenas. Guamui, si Santigorido. Dan saludo, para handu todu, ni man Sinidot paagu, ni man presenti, dan iti man, mapus na tempo. Hungan, ugo supati, esti, labio, ugo supati. Para Guam, gi opinion, nuna banda. The ruling by Judge Gatewood on this paper side, to me, is terrible and insulting to the Chamorro people. It's totally a slap in the face for the Chamorro people. And it's also a sad month for the Chamorro people, knowing that this month is Miss Chamorro and that the Chamoros are celebrating Guam history and Chamorro heritage. Matu ri man ma fashe, nixai, nek nestee. Dave Davis, and I don't care whether he's here or not, I don't care, he's listening. Dave Davis is a racist. He's a pure white man racist. He is an interloper. And if you don't know what an interloper mean, interloper, the one that interferes in somebody's business, a personal business, like. Omey entalugi business, ni man chamoru, ni protesti, zon ya, plebiscite. Si Dave Davis, ti macalanais na taata. Hitani chamoru, man macalanais. Ai ti guiza. Kontodu edusia, iman motu ma, gini, pa fanyaga, gini, da pa patzuni, i apetunidad, gini, gi, islata. Ti man macalanais, enosia. Atuwa, si Dave Davis, na ta dza, businessnya, proharun, na po fanbota, gini, plebiscite. Pus para Guam, Judge Gatewood, I believe, is confused about this paper side Chamorro only vote. That's the way I see it, that's my opinion. I'm not a lawyer. And I also, Judge Gatewood saying that this paper side is a public issue. It's not a public issue. This is not a public issue. The paper side for the Chamoros, gentlemen, is a human rights issue. Human rights issue. Ta fana para, public issue. Hitani chamoru, man macalansa, gini, gi islata. If Judge Gatewood is so hotshot about the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendment of the Constitution, how come he's not saying anything that we are supposed to be U.S. citizens and we cannot even vote for United States President? How come he's not, she's not saying that? But she went on and agreed to support a racist person who come here, make Guam their home, and this is the same guy, Dave Davis, is trying to destroy us on the Chamorro Land Trust. I know that for a long time, I know it. I'm a member of the Nation Chamorro. I'm a former Magalahe of the Nation Chamorro. I'm also a veteran of the United States Army, infantry, combat veteran. I've been around. I've been around, I've been to hell. I know what it's like. But this is another hell for me here on this island. Chamorro must stand up, gatsu. I heard some of you, I was saying it Thursday, said, "Oh, we're already here." Well, ma, ista man, man dadanya, eh, gini? Hungan dai, man dadanya, eh, no, ti man ihitaa. Ti man ihitaa. Ti man ihitaa, mbie. To du dai, na pinithi dai, na pinithi. Wow, man, when I see the headline, "Pebble side law, unconstitutional." Ta dza, dota constitution, safana para, unconstitution. We don't even have a constitution. Best alu, you know, Judge Gatewood's decision really is a true example, eh, of what it's like to be a colonized judge. Let's face it, eh, let's face it. And make no mistake, the Guam government is nothing more but a puppet government. A puppet government being ruled by a foreign power, the United States federal government. Okay? And another thing that Judge Gatewood said, "Oh, I can understand, you know, the people, the colonized, for their desire to decolonize themselves. And we must recognize the people who are living before us now." I think it should be the opposite. I think Judge Gatewood should say that the people who come to this island should respect us and recognize us. Siya, debidu, respetaa, hit. Afu, nada motu ma, gini kita nohta, pa be, si Guam, mu respetao, dati mu respetao. You kidding me? No, I'm sorry. But that's the way I see it. I supported this appeal, and I hope to see full. Because like I said, the decision on this paper side by Judge Gatewood is terrible and insulting to the Chamorro people. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi. Enrique Torres?
Good morning, everyone, good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, the rest of the body. My name is Enrique Torres, I'm from the village of Jonia. I come here on my own, as a private citizen. Remember these slogans or battle cries, if you may call? "The British are coming." Remember the Alamo. Remember the Lusitania. Remember Pearl Harbor. Remember the World Trade Center, remember the Pentagon and the flight that crashed in Pennsylvania. But no one, nowhere do you remember, uh, no one, nowhere in history does everyone ever ask or asked us to remember Guam, the occupation of Guam, the atrocities committed here. Nowhere else in the United States were there concentration camps. Nowhere else were properties taken away. Also, the Jews were, they were in the process of being eliminated from the face of the planet through genocide. The Spanish tried to do that to the Chamoros. And during the occupation, the Japanese. I've looked at war videos and I've listened to my, my, my parents. These are real human rights violations. But then again, human rights were here before you, asking for you to help. But then again, human rights were here before you, asking for you to help us with our human rights. Not our privileges. This is our human rights, we're asking you to help us with our human rights. Not a privilege. So. My governor, my leaders, my brothers and sisters, the sons and daughters. And I'm referring also to my brothers and sisters in the continental United States of America, and to the rest of the world. Join us, join us with this, um, appeal. Show us our solidarity. And don't forget, we also feel that the cooperation is still an injustice. In many parts of the world, when it comes to human rights of the native inhabitants, they're recognized. In Canada, the tribe there is called the First Nation. We're just asking that the Chamorro people of native descent, or at least the belief in the culture, the belief in the tradition, consider themselves to be Chamorro. And after the fact that they were born here, their parents were born here, their great-grandparents were born here. So. The Aborigines in Australia. I was in the Philippines and I was, um, just having my teeth looked at. And I was listening to a discussion, they were in Filipino, their Tagalog language. It was between my dentist and his colleague, a plastic surgeon. They were talking about citizenship, and United States citizenship. Wow, I said, "I really wanted to get into this discussion." So, I kind of asked them to clarify what they were saying. Well, they were saying, you know, after the war, World War II, they were asked to decide if they wanted to become American citizens. Decide? Wow. And their fathers were in that, that responsible citizens to decide that determination. And they turned it down because they didn't want to be considered brown Americans. I'm a brown American with... I told them some of the privileges of an American citizen. Not all. And I hope one day that I get to be rewarded with what is due us if we were going to be American citizens, full-fledged Americans. And also, in that discussion, I, you know, I made that distinction. All the Americans, we've got lots of freedoms, we've got liberties, we can go own homes and all that, and our, our, our human statuses are civilized. We live in a civilized society. And if you know the Philippines, you kind of see there's a, from a third-world country, maybe it's now considered closer to, equivalent to the United States. So, it was, um, when we were talking, I said, "Well, he..." So, all of that, but you still have some issues, right? Yeah, we still have some issues. And he stated, "Well, how old is the United States government?" To look about, I thought back and said, "Well, they moved, they removed themselves from the British and they became self-governing in 1776, so roughly 216 years." And he kind of laughed and said, "Well, you know, the Philippine government is only 76 years old." Yes, we have corruption, not to say that the United States has no corruption. Yes, there are some violations of human rights and, and all the things that you can come to realize that the United States is not really a, a, a good, or a, is what it's all built up to. Okay? So they still have some more time to develop, time to change. Change is what we're asking for. So Guam, you are our government leaders. Give our people, Chamorro nation, First Nation, however you want to, and maybe part of this, part of this second chance or moving forward, we, we think about native inhabitants, we think about what it is to qualify yourself for a plebiscite? I'm not the expert on this matter. But give us a choice, give us a choice, and give us a dialogue to speak about it. And we want to be able to be recognized as in this global community as self-governing. Madam Chair, I support this bill, this resolution. And you in front of us are leaders. You have almost 825 years of experience. We don't look at you as young Chamoros, or leaders, or people who want to carry our fight forward. You are the ones that are here before the rest of us to bring us to this quest. So I applaud you for taking this, um, this opportunity to move our quest forward. Look amongst yourselves, look deep within your hearts, deepen within your ability to research, the ability to get expert consultation throughout not just Guam, the rest of the world, the United Nations. Do your due diligence for us. So, in closing, I say to Matthew, Patrick, and Nathan, my sons. Your dad asks, "Did you make your choice for your life decisions?" But remember my legacy, as I remember the legacies of my ancestors. I supported our quest, and I support this bill, this, I mean, the Resolution 52-34, towards self-determination for as long, as long as it takes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres.
Apa de, amzo toros genolu? Guau si Robert Young Beneventi, celun difunto Magalai, si et Beneventi. You know, last night, I went inside the Chamorro Land Trust just to figure this thing out. I figured what's going on with the Chamorro Land Trust, no? Even my brother was making on behalf of the Chamorro Land Trust. You know, that was a while ago. And I was just trying to look where he left off, so I could carry on what was left. But it's, you know, the problem lies with our leaders, really. If we, if we had, for example, the Chamorro Land Trust first, issue is that when we implement the Chamorro Land Trust in the beginning, 1995, uh, 1997, uh, 1995, right? You know, our leaders should have looked for something that won't harm the Chamorro Land Trust in the beginning, and protect it instead of quavelling every administration, directors changing their own policies, and so forth. And I'm glad there's a lot of young senators out there, half-bright, minds open, hearts and so forth. Dali, am pitaa for this kind of issues, Gatzo. I'm, this came from the woodwork. Dali, Gatzo. And this should have been done yesterday, to sustain the Chamorro Land Trust for our future generation to come, which is not me. It is your children, our children. Like, like my brother always said, "Itanota, ilahit, ifama gonta, karitata, sagwata, gumata." That's what it's all about. It is us. It's only us that we could fix this problem. If we, if we stand together, like, man, I hear everybody else, else here talking about that life history. Thank God you guys listen, you know? But let's proceed forward and do something with it. Like, for example, what are we going to face Judge Getwood, eh? For my first example, eh? I will take an issue from the United States itself. The Indian reservation, is it segregation? Hawaiian Trust Act is what, racist? How about Chamorro Land Trust now, which is a territory? As leaders here, thank God I didn't win for senator. I will fight this through, and I will walk out to any Congress or Washington if they don't hear us. My goodness, I am 64 years old, great-grandfather's there. What are we waiting for? Our foundation is falling like it was a paper rag down there. Lasti my lati. My goodness. Hi, Gatzo. Let's take those actua tupac and start throwing it back. There, 15 of you guys. Apparently, danna, Gatzo, we have, we have our leaders here, we have our lawyers, our judges, local judges that has been. Danna, Madame Fon Mamahlo, Shane, from the district court. Why didn't the district court fight that 22 years ago? Why? They just waited for Dave Davis? While those things was happening from 1995, they should have protected the Chamorro Land Trust entity. Take it out from the government. Take, I mentioned that, even former Senator Ted Nelson, when we had that hearing. We should take away the Chamorro Land Trust away from the entity of the government, so the government won't be liable for lawsuit. Hopefully, put a tribunal counsel in there. My goodness, Gatzo, wake up and smell the coffee. Yeah, I'm a veteran. That blessing, Gatzo, I don't need this, Gatzo. I'm a veteran, and I served my time in the military. Danna, it's insulting for me to hear it again and again, Gatzo. Too old for this crap. And I don't care what race you're calling you from, you should understand where we're coming from as Chamorro. Because we want, when we go to your country, you want, we want to have that opportunity. Like Guam, oh, Guam is a US territory, everybody could come in. Duh. You're not invited, buddy. You came here for reason, not to kill, not to murder.
Can we just make sure, senor, you're actually going into the microphone? Because we need to capture this for the recording, and also for the people who are watching, because what you're saying is very, very important.
I'm so sorry, to, next time, put a cushion down there. Anyway, I'm being realistic, you know? I, I, I am for sure in my heart and through all these people that are here today, even my cousin, she, Bob Pelkey. Everybody here, I practically know everybody, from Sima to, from Victoria, all 25 years ago. I will, you know, this is all the hearts that we have. We've got, we've got the heart here, we've got the fuel. By numbers, we don't need to. Take the census, we know, see, uh, former senator, when I was reading the messenger. Well, take the census from the 1900s of the Chamorro natives and utilize that. Dali, Gatzo, everybody died? From that census? I don't think so. Use that for your arms. Use, use the, the Indian reservation, use the Hawaiian Trust Act, use that. Let's see what Francis Getwood would say. Racist, discrimination? I would, I would love to say something nice, but forget it. But I don't want to come back again and again, like, Senator, Senator Nicholas, I know you're very vocal with so many things, but, you know, as far as, and I hope everybody does in the future, because I will still vote for you, I don't care what, what party you're from, but as long as you do your job, do it right. Please, Salada, right, right now? It's, it's from one government, from one administration to the other, to the other senators, to the other, they will do this for two years, they'll do this with the poor. Nothing's happening, nothing's happening, but crisis on our hands today. And that, I'll just leave it at that, Senator. And I thank God everybody's here to testify, eh? On behalf of the Chamorro Land Trust, and also 52, 51, I'm very supportive of that, because it goes, it's the same ball. The same ball, this is where we came from, and so we have to stand up for who we are. Zuzmasi, eh?
Zuzmasi, Mr. Beneventi. Attorney Phillips, or Jamela, Jamela Santos.
Apa de? My name is Jamela Adipon Santos. I am the daughter of Nicholas Mercado Santos and the late Emilita Adipon Santos. My ethnic origins are from San Juan Batangas, Philippines, where my mother was born, and San Fernando, Bangbanga, Philippines, where my father was born. I was conceived, born, and raised here on the island of Guam. I have called Guam my home. I have left home, and I have returned home. Guam is the only place I know as home. And even though I breathe the air I breathe, eat the foods from the rich soil of this blessed land, drink of the waters, swim in the ocean abundant with life, even though my existence today is shaped and supported and nurtured by Guam, my home, I do not claim my identity as Chamorro or as a native inhabitant. This is not for me to claim. I am clear that my people are from the Philippines. I am clear that the blood that runs through these veins is from a lineage of Filipinos and Filipinas whose ancestry comes from the Philippine Islands. Maybe at some rough point in my adolescent years, I claimed Spanish ancestry because I wanted to be associated with the supposedly privileged and desired lighter-skinned folks. But I never claimed to be Chamorro. Nor have I demanded to have the same status or rights as the indigenous people of this island. This is not for me to demand. The plaintiff, Arnold "Dave" Davis, argues that his rights are being violated. Dave Davis is described as a white, non-Chamorro male who is a resident of Guam. Again, Dave Davis argues that his rights are being violated. As a person of Filipino ancestry who calls Guam home, I do not feel that my rights are being violated because I cannot participate in the political status plebiscite. If the question that came about at the very beginning was asking what the Chamorro people wanted their political status to be, because it was forcefully changed for them in the first place, then why in the world would I think that I have any right or say in this vote? This vote is not for me. It's for my Chamorro brothers and sisters, mothers and fathers, nanas and tatas. It's okay, I stand by you. I want you to be able to say how you wish to govern yourselves. I want you to be able to say how you wish to govern yourselves, make rules that make sense for you again, because those were taken away from you against your wishes. I think that I have heard crazy talk like, if the Chamoros change their political status, you could be kicked out of Guam. They'll tell everyone who's not Chamorro to leave. It makes me laugh, but it also makes me really sad. Sad not because I believe that it will happen, sad because people think so black and white like that. The Chamorro people, like many indigenous people know, they've always known about how to maintain balance and harmony. Colonization has been toxic. Colonization has poisoned the atmosphere, the psyche, the spirit of a people who danced and chanted in harmony, who fished and hunted and harvested with balance, who weaved, sailed, and navigated throughout Oceania. The Chamorro people know harmony. And somehow, I'm not afraid of getting kicked out. I don't hear future voices saying, hey, you Tagalu, go home, get the fuck out of my island. I don't hear that. I don't believe that's going to happen. I believe that the Chamorro people just want to find that place of balance and harmony again. And so long as everyone else's rules and laws and statutes blanket and stifle the island, it will be very tiring and a lot of work to find that harmony and balance once again. May I make this plea to my Filipino brothers and sisters to understand what it means to be an ally? Know that we can go back to the Philippines and for the most part, know that we govern We live on the lands of someone else who does not get to make their own rules. In the spirit of reciprocating or maintaining balance, we must be allies. I am in support of the appeal of the Dave Davis case. Sina Maasi, Meraming Salamat Po.
Pago, I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Luis Borhamunia. Okay, Senator Casper Bauer, you may have a seat up here. And senor, senor Agun, you may also have a seat up here. And Attorney Phillips, you may proceed.
Buenos dias, Madam Chair and members of the committee and this legislature. I think most of what could be said has been said. I want to make sure that I'm clear for the record, I support both resolutions and the causes behind them. I think if we start with agreement that there can be no legitimate authority without the consent of the governed, then the equation's simple. It really comes out to, that hasn't been done yet. And so without the consent of the governed anywhere, this is not unique to the Chamorro people, you cannot have legitimate authority. Now, that does not mean that you cannot have an opinion, and we've received an opinion recently by someone that currently enjoys the power to render opinions. But of course, it's confined to a system, and this is not new for our people. It wasn't new in 1898, when there was a pledge that the native inhabitants would have their futures determined by the Congress, that hasn't been done. It's the same definition of native inhabitants, I can assure you. Nothing was done in 1936 and 37 when the pleas and there was a rejection from the native inhabitants and many years in between. And even in 1949, when basically the military governor interfered with legitimate process that Speaker Wampat and many assemblymen and senators had the courage to commence, it took a lot of courage. When the military governor interfered, he had the authority to do that, but he did not have the legitimate authority. And so obviously, history changed. But one thing our people didn't do in 1898 and the early 1900s, 1917, 36, 1949, they didn't run. And I think in part because of these issues, they were extremely educated on a day-to-day basis of what was going on. They didn't run, but they also understood that certain people in certain positions of power were entitled to their opinion, but it didn't legitimize it. And that will always be the case. The examples given, I think, are very, very simple, but they're not complete. You could go on and on and on and probably provide for the record a thousand examples like that where, wait, how come over here it's okay, over here it's not okay? And so, Madam Chair, is one of the attorneys that argued the Chamorro land trust act, the implementation, if we had not won that day, that would not mean that it's not correct, it just would mean you didn't win that day. If you ask me, back then, did I expect to win that case? I did expect to win that case. If you ask me, in the current situation that Guam faces before the district court, would I have expected to win or an attorney win the case that we're talking about? The answer is no. But it doesn't change right and wrong. It can't change right and wrong, because it's not based on an interpretation by a court system that is not legitimate. We don't even enjoy the same judge, so to speak, that states enjoy. But even if we did, it still would not be legitimate, and therefore, you really have no authority, because you don't have the consent of the governed. The blessing that comes with the consent of the governed is it benefits everybody. And I take very seriously what, you know, Senator Siniklas' comments, because I read those in the case, and honestly, whether it's just as someone from Guam or an attorney, it bothered me, it's kind of different. I'll just say it was different. And it's not a secret that the Chamorro land trust act is supposed to benefit the Chamorro people in Guam, it's not a secret. And it's not a secret that Chamorro self-determination is for the Chamorro people. Where I think the misconception is, is very similar to affirmative action in the past, especially when there was mostly needed, civil rights and many other things. Treaties with Native American tribes that currently did and currently do reside in America, it's for everybody. Everybody benefits. When you have a displaced native inhabitant group as a people, as we do on Guam, when you have a unique people being extinguished and that is prevented because you're preserving a homeland for them, everybody wins. Everybody wins. But of course, that's policy. And someone would be right in saying, you know, Mike, that's your opinion. It is. But I'll tell you where I don't believe there's a debate at all, and that is, until there's the consent of the governed, there can be no legitimate authority. And we need legitimate authority. To the extent that people step forward and say, you know, I agree, I'll put my signature there. Well, we have the treaty in 1898 when that was promised, we have the UN Charter where that was promised. And I think like myself, if you sign a document and you're pledging that you can be held to this, it's a commitment, then I should be able to hold you to it. All we're doing is holding, in this case, the United States to commitments that they made. But even if they didn't make those commitments, everything you heard here today would still be correct, even without it. But what adds, as they say, sometimes fuel to the fire, is these commitments have been made over and over again. What are you going to do, go to court and find the UN Charter unconstitutional? You can't, they're at the same level. Even dealing within that system, you're going to find those inconsistencies. And so you have to ask yourself, well, what are we going to do? Well, I'll tell you, the adversity that we face today, ladies and gentlemen, is nothing compared to what the Chamoros and anybody on Guam faced over the last 100 years. Nothing. It's nothing. And that doesn't mean that your responsibility is not as immense, maybe even more, because you're at a pivotal point in history today. But at the same time, just think back at the consequences that would befall a Chamorro leader or any public servant back then when those decisions were made. I can assure you that even though they're not well-covered, they're not well-documented with Speaker Wampat and those that supported his acts, not very much is written of them, but they're courageous, there were consequences. I can tell you that there were consequences for B.J. Berdario and F.P. Leon Guero going to Congress and saying what needed to be said. Those are not covered very well. And it's obvious, because those that write history are usually the people that are in control. But that doesn't make it right. And so today and tomorrow, you have to decide, well, if for example, these two identical programs, the right to self-determination and the Chamorro land trust act, if they came from the Congress of the United States, the chances of any challenge succeeding in the courts are very minimal. It's almost certain that they would pass muster, even within the federal system. But it's the same program. It doesn't make it wrong because of the fact that the people of Guam decided on their own that they're going to get things going and they're going to have Chamorro's exercise self-determination. It doesn't make it wrong that the Chamorro people and everybody on Guam decided that we're going to have a Chamorro land trust act. It's not constitutional in the sense like with Hawaii, where it came from the Congress, it was negotiated, I'm assuming, and it's part of their constitution, but it's the same thing. And so you have to ask yourself, why would I run from a fight over a program that if you do it, it's called constitutional? If I do it, it's called unconstitutional? The words are the same, everything's the same. And if I can, I would like to just end in one thought, because it's something that surprised me, but it's stuck with me over these many, many years. I think it was 1992 or 1994, I was at the Democratic National Convention, and I was told to link up with a congressman named Mike Honda. I had no idea who he was. And it ended up, he's pretty much a living legend, and he was pretty much the, one of the prime individuals responsible for the compensation for Japanese-Americans that were wrongfully interred. But what's not written very often is the fact that as a Japanese-American, he refused to support a bill for reparations that didn't contain language saying, not one, not one Japanese-American was ever found to be a traitor, not one. So he was asked, why would you stall a bill that's going to give everything else that is wanted, just because you want that one phrase? And he said, because 50 to 100 years from now, there's going to be a little Japanese-American girl in a classroom, and someone's going to say, your people were traitors. And if we don't empower her to say, that's not true, and as part of the law, we make it very clear that no, not one single Japanese-American was ever found to be a traitor, we leave that little girl vulnerable. And that's where we are today. We've heard the stories of our people selling their land and all that, it's comical, but in 50 to 100 years, it may not be. Because again, the person who writes history is the person in charge, and they actually start to try and convince our people that after the war, we wanted to sell our land and we gave it willingly and all that. It's fairy tales, fairy tales. But as the generations go, we don't empower our people with that written history, to be clear. That's not what happened. It seems to me, you're a little bit embarrassed of history, and you should be. But the point is, we all know that, but those that come after us won't know. The worst thing we could do is when someone writes a letter, and really, ladies and gentlemen, it's just some person in a department. We do it here and they do it there, and they've done it three years on both sides. We've had the United States federal government sign off on the articles that everybody on Guam voted for in the Commonwealth Draft Act. Everybody that was entitled to vote was allowed to vote for the Chamorro land trust act, was allowed to vote for Chamorro self-determination, and the majority did. Now, is that perfect legitimacy and the consent of the governed? Well, it's a lot further than one person in court, and it'll take you a lot further than one bureaucrat in DC, I would suggest. But on top of that, it was reviewed by the Congress and the task force that was put together by the Congress in the executive branch, at one point, signed off on those articles. So again, it's, you know, is that necessarily relevant in the court of law? I don't know, that's a different forum. But when we're discussing, you know, the good and the bad here, I think it marries discussion that, wait a minute, at one point, you guys signed off on these programs, and for more years than you've opposed it, you have supported it. And that Chamorro land trust act looks awfully identical to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. And how does that survive? People say, well, it's rice kayakano. And I promise I'll end with this. Rice kayakano had nothing or very little to do with the actual act as much as it did over governance. And they basically said, if you hold an election in our system, you know, I don't see why everybody can't, you know, have a part in governing. That didn't destroy the act, we just talked about the governance. And so those are two separate things. Again, the heart of the challenge to the Chamorro land trust act is not governance, it's the act itself. And it's the recognition that there's certain people that will benefit, I believe everybody benefits, but of course, there's a designation of a group of people, the native inhabitants that have been referred to in different ways and defined in different ways over the years, but we're pretty much talking about the same group of people. Again, whether it's in their system or our system, and whether certain people that currently have power render certain decisions, doesn't determine the legitimacy of that, and it doesn't change whether it's right or wrong. But your decision today, really, like with Mike Honda's refusal to accept reparations for Japanese-Americans without that specific language saying, not a single Japanese-American was ever found to be a traitor, you are able to make that decision today, because you ensure that your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren and all of our descendants are never told that, oh, no, no, you guys agreed, you guys agreed there was something wrong here. And somehow, unconstitutional is equated with immoral or wrong or without legitimacy, and in fact, in many cases, it's not. So I just humbly ask you to take your responsibilities very seriously, as I know you do and I appreciate all of you that are here today. But I just want to make sure that you don't think that your acts, even if it results in yet another court loss, are somehow not as important as those that were made by Speaker Wampat and the many, many Guam leaders that came before that Congress. And with that, I thank you so much for your time, Sidoos Masie.
Thank you very much, Attorney Phillips, and I'd like to thank you for your work in getting the Chamorro land trust implemented in 1995. Sidoos Masie. Okay, we've been, I've been putting all the questions for the panels off, but, I mean, Attorney Phillips, if you don't mind, could we ask you just a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Mike, Senator. I'm trying to see in my mind how everything is going to unfold based on what you shared, for example. And you testified that if you were asked if you thought we would win the case, you said the answer is no.
Yeah, I don't think so.
How about with the appeal?
Of course, Senator, I qualify that, and I start and I hopefully end with the idea that has nothing to do with whether or not we should try, because the attempt and going on record is not agreeing, I think at times, maybe even this time, has more consequence. It'll have more consequence when we end up before Congress one day, likely. I mean, there's no guarantee of anything, but that's where we were before. And can you imagine someone like yourself negotiating on behalf of the people of Guam, but yet your people, or maybe even yourself before, had consented and said, you know, you're right? How does a congressman from a city or county in Washington State look at that and say, well, you're asking for something today that you agreed with, you know, 30 years earlier? years earlier, twenty years earlier, was wrong? I mean, you have to say, well, I wasn't really wrong, it was just unconstitutional.
I'm just trying, if you can just bear with me, I'm just trying to see how the sequence will unfold. So you felt we would lose in District Court. If we appeal and we lose, and we go to the Supreme Court and we lose, what happens after that?
Well, there's, there's two things. There's one thing that doesn't happen, and, and that is, there's never a record of the people of Guam agreeing with a certain act, because of the fact that we were going to lose. That's, that's number one. But number two, I think even during that, there's, there's no reason to wait. But the avenue, of course, that, that I've always advocated, is through Congress. But I, well, again, qualify that, just like the Chamor Land Trust Act, the fact that Congress gives or doesn't give, does not mean that that's wrong. I, along with the chairperson and, and now Judge Mike Bagdari, argued to have it implemented. And I knew at that time, and, and on the opposing side, you know, actually was now Attorney General Liz Barrett Anderson, representing the governor, and they were, they were doing, you know, what they felt they had to do. That was one of the arguments that, wait, only Congress can, can pass programs such as affirmative action and, and things like that. The individual states, or in this case, the territory, doesn't have the authority to do it. Well, we prevailed, but, but at the same time, if we had not, and, and the judge had ruled that, yes, Congress can do this, but you can't, I, that, that wouldn't determine, I think, for anybody that the program or the act is wrong, or that you shouldn't push for it, it just means that under, under the system that, that is there, I think, without the consent of the governed, you're required to do something different. But it doesn't change the program at all. What would have changed, though, is if our people never implemented, the, the act was authored in seventy-four, it was patterned after the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, it was signed into law, I believe in January of seventy-five. If our people had never done that, we would never be talking about the Chamor Land Trust Act today.
Yeah, no, I want to, I actually want to clearly bifurcate the, the plebiscite ruling with the land trust ruling, because I agree with you. I think that there's a lot of rationale to protect the land trust. I think that, I also agree with you, I think that the rationale to, to defend the plebiscite, plebiscite vote is very tenuous. And so just approaching it strictly from the plebiscite question, if we lose the appeal and we lose in the Supreme Court, can you give me a clear example of what the next course of action would be after that? Because assuming that that happens, what do we do?
Well, I think that I wouldn't, with all due respect, Senator, call it next, because I think the, the efforts can be made simultaneously, but from everything that, that I've seen in, in my lifetime, and everything that I've read, under that system, the more likely path to success is through the Congress. It's, but it's, it's not for the faint of heart. I mean, it's, it can go on and on and on and on, and they will continue to ask you to change your question, if they don't like what you're asking. They won't tell you no, in my opinion, but they will say, you know, why don't you ask me a different question? And they'll wear you down, or they'll, they'll at least try to. But in, under that system, when it comes from the Congress, we've all seen, basically with regard to the territories, the Congress can do almost anything that it wants. And, you know, oftentimes, that's for bad, you know, sometimes that's for good. Well, obviously, this is a, a time where they are empowered by, by the Constitution, they're empowered by treaties, to make that determination. And they have pledged that the native inhabitants of Guam will exercise self-determination. And so at that level, and with that body, Congress, not the executive branch, but, but Congress, it's, it's almost like sovereign immunity with the Guam legislature. That's yours. It's nothing that, you know, people can argue about it all day long, but that's something that you have, have the exclusive right to determine or waive, and nobody else can. And so with regard to Chamor self-determination, under that system, that, that doesn't mean that it, that it's right, it just means that under that system, the Congress is empowered to, to make that happen. In fact, Congress and the United States have pledged to, to make that happen. And so when, when you come from, from, from that source, I believe that the chances are, are much higher than, than going through the District Court route.
And so the reason--
And the reverse, if I may, the reverse holds true, that, that the chances of, of failing, it's not a question that we're bringing, someone else is bringing the question to the federal courts, so it's not like we're asking them to, to oppose, it's someone saying, can you strike this down? It's a very difficult path, because under the, the current rules as set by Congress, that's not happening. And so until such time that it happens, under that system, it, it's weaker. That doesn't mean, as I said, and I'm, I need to keep saying it, that I advocate not pursuing it, because that will have drastic ramifications, I mean, very, very serious ramifications upon your efforts in Congress, which could be a day later, could be at the same time, or it could be ten years later. It will have very, very serious ramifications.
For, for not appealing?
For, absolutely. At any, giving in through anything that appears to be consenting, will, will have very, very serious consequences. I, in, in one of the cases that I represented a Chamor family, over the, they were occupying their ancestral land in Monkfo Dedito, Senator Angel Santos was, was one of those individuals, and they were two separate cases. And one of what they perceived to be a big plus on their side, the United States, the federal government, was they had a check that was apparently signed by one family member. And, you know, we might find that kind of funny, but, oh yeah, a check that they, that one family member, they allege, endorsed. They're waving, no, 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 we paid you. And of course, we're looking at them like, are you serious? But, but at the same time, they felt that that somehow legitimized what they had done, and, and they were there to show the court that, no, no, look, under this system, you know, they gave in. They, they gave the property, and they gave them, you know, some monies, some money in return. And again, similarly here, it's not about money, but it's about the, the leaders of Guam deciding to either consent to that, and when you consent, you know, the, the ramification, it's not like in criminal defense, where you sometimes take a plea called no look, contend, no contest, you're saying, I'm not really saying that you're right, I'm just saying you have an overwhelming, overwhelming amount of evidence. This is not a no contest plea. This is, this is very different. I mean, it's obviously something that, that it's a consent decree, just like with the Department of Corrections. Most laypeople interpret it to mean that we agreed that we needed to fix some things up there. We agree with that. And I don't know whether that's true or not, but just as, as from a layperson's standpoint, that's the way everybody, I think, understandably interprets the consent decree. That, that, no, we, we weren't going to fight that one, because, you know, we agree are right there. And whether that's right or wrong, the, if, whether there was some other tactical purpose for doing it, if your intent was to fight it at a later time, or the, or dot dump, or any of these issues that, that, that ended with consent decrees, I believe you've, you've chosen the wrong path, because at that point, you know, everybody just shakes their head.
So if I can, I, I really want to try and get a handle then of how this would unfold than given, given what you're sharing. So we appeal, we lose, we go to the Supreme Court, we lose. I'm not saying we're going to lose, but if, if that happened--
Sure.
Then we go to the Congress. And so between all of that, all of that time will have passed, and then we're going to go to the Congress and ask them, now, some of my colleagues are saying no, and I'm sure the, the statement is going to be, we can do it at the same time.
Or, or not do it, sure.
But then the question becomes, wouldn't the Congress just turn around and say, well, we want to wait for the courts to rule? And so as we're waiting for the court decisions, and all of this time is passing, we eventually get to the end of the road, and assuming worst-case scenario, we lose all the cases, couldn't the Congress come back again and say, we're not going to do it, because the court's already ruled no? And then if that happens, if the Congress says, we're not going to do this at all, because you appealed, and you appealed, and the court's already ruled no, then what do we do?
Senator, when, when you argued the Chamor Land Trust Act, the, the opposition, I think, artfully and correctly pointed out that, and it wasn't the best argument, that the people of Guam themselves could not create the Chamor Land Trust Act. Under the, the, under the Constitution, so to speak, it was supposed to come from the federal government. That was the best argument, and they made it.
I want to bifurcate the land trust question with the plebiscite question, because what I'm trying to get to--
No, and, and that's what, if I could explain, Senator, the reason I mention that is because that's nowhere in the current federal court opinion. And in my humble opinion, it, it should have been there. The idea that, that, well, you, you can't, in, in the current system, decide on your own that you're going to exercise self-determination. That goes against the grain of, you know, most common sense interpretations of self-determination, but that is under the system the way it works. And so, very similar to the Chamor Land Trust Act, they're both legitimate, as seen from their system, if it comes from their Congress. And so I understand you're, you're, you're saying, can we bifurcate the two? But the, the, what's missing in the current court analysis is that, kind of like a P.S., if, if this came from the Congress, it, it would likely have a very different result. And, and that's what we can't give up on, because I think as long as we point that out and we maintain that, we hold them to an obligation that, that they've made, not, not just to us, but to, to the world, that, that this will happen, then it's very difficult for Congress in the long run to not do that. But I, but I, I would also like to add that if there's any concern that appealing the case will delay things, nothing, nothing will proceed that fast in Congress anyway. I think historically, we've seen that, so I, I appreciate the concern, but I don't think that's, that's really anything you need to worry about delaying the, the process, because Congress moves very, very slow anyway. You guys are fast.
What, the, the, and my last question, Madam Chair, and just thank you, thank you for, because I'm really trying to wrap my, my head around what the right decision's going to be. If we didn't appeal, if we just said, you know what, exactly what you said, until there is consent of the governed, there can be no legitimate authority, we're not recognizing the legitimate authority of this ruling on this Davis case, we're going straight to you, Congress, because they're apparently saying, you need to change it, so we're not going to appeal this, we're just coming to you. Couldn't we do that? Because I don't think they can turn around and say, don't come to us, appeal it. I think that they would need to, at that point, adjudicate it from their perspective, because their courts have already ruled, and an act of Congress can be conditional upon the people appealing. So couldn't we just go straight to Congress at this point, since we are already dissatisfied? And, and the reason why I ask that is because if we appeal and go straight to Congress, then they can point to us and say, oh, we're going to wait for that ruling. And what I'm worried about is that appeal, appeal, years and years and years. Why don't we just go straight? Why don't we just go straight and say, we're not, we're not going to recognize that ruling as legitimate? You guys need to get your act together and give us some kind of congressional relief. And then we get to the immediacy of the question, rather than allowing them to point to court cases and drawing us out. So couldn't we just do that instead? Because, and that's, and that's my only concern about this appeal, is I'm worried that it's going to give them the, the rationale and the resources to continue to draw this out and say, oh, no, you guys are appealing your case, wait for your adjudication. And then the courts can take almost as long as they want. This Davis case took six years. The Supreme Court could refuse to hear the case entirely. So perhaps, we should just go straight to the, to the Congress? And, and if you could perhaps chime in on that?
I'd just chime in on that also, Senator. I think the people of Guam should have been going to Congress all these years. I think that's what, what all of our leaders have always said, that we have many paths to self-determination, and we use all of them as, as best we can. And Congress has always, always been the path, it's a path we were, we were on, on our Commonwealth quest, we were there, right? Regularly, and, and so, yes, I agree that we should be there, we should have been there, and we will be there.
My, my only concern, Madam Chair, is that I have seen us delay legislative action because there's a pending court case. Like, I remember us not acting on certain gambling initiatives, because we were waiting for the gambling case to be resolved. And so if we initiate cases, and that gives Congress the rationale to not act, because they're waiting for the case to be resolved, then are we potentially hamstringing ourselves by appealing, when we should instead be saying, you know what, you're wrong, and we're going straight to Congress to get, to get relief from you?
Senator, the--
That's my concern.
Sure. The, what will be before Congress is, and the charge placed there is that the, the Congress of the United States shall determine the political status of the native inhabitants of Guam. That's their charge. And our presentation to them, while it, in the past, historically, has always included a remedy for the fact that there's an illegitimate govern, a government, until such time that you have the consent of the governed, and, and therefore, one of the articles addresses Chamor self-determination, it's just one literally of many. And so the push there is, is really comprehensive, it's everything. Like I said, even the Chamor Land Trust Act was mentioned in, in the draft Commonwealth Act. Chamor self-determination, control of immigration, many, many different articles and many different causes and issues. So this would just be one. I don't think that, that it would be, of course, you know, you, you never know what one individual congressman's going to say, but I don't think overall, it would be distracting at all. Although I do believe it would be if, if we consented. It, it really has significance when, when you consent. And like I said, going back to that, that story, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but that, that one check, and wasn't for very much, but one member of, of, of a family, having endorsed it, was used to argue that somehow, the land wasn't really taken. I guess it was sold by, you know, a real estate broker or something, I don't know, but the, the point is that it's, it's devastating. It would also, I think--
On the consent question, I just, I really--
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may, if, if the good senator can't wrap his head around it, maybe he can schedule a meeting to talk about it. But I think we can't keep all these good people waiting, and I think the other senators have some, some questions.
That's my concern. I just, I, I've hoiled off on all the questions until the end, to make sure that we get all the testimony, and I don't want to cut your questioning, I think it's very important that the senators get all their questions answered, so that they can either, you know, they can decide what to do. It's very, very important. Attorney Phillips, are you willing to come back for round two? I really, I very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam--
Is that okay with you, Senator?
Uh, will this be a--
Will be on the record, will continue to be on the record. Thank you very much. And thank you all for your patience, I know it's really been very long. Thank you very much. I know some of you are losing hope that your name is even on this list, so I'm just going to read it, so you don't get too discouraged. So we've got Senator Casper Bauer, Sen. Ogden, Senator Hope Cristobal, Francisco Mesa, LaCia Casil, Ray Lujan, LaCrisia Castro Santos, Rosario Perez, Ben Meno, Sen. Meno, Edward Cruz, Teresa Diaz. I'm going to keep reading, you can't all fit right now, but I'm just going to keep reading the list. Teresa Diaz, so my colleagues will also know who, who we will hear from. Jose Garido, Josette Canata, Manny Duñez, Maganiti, David Raborn, Darren Pangolinen, Michael Bevacua, Carlos Camacho, Trini Torres, Ronald Leguadna, Ned Pablo. Munoz? Munoz, sure. Munoz, something. Frank? Maybe Frank, okay. And, okay, so if we can begin with Sen. Ogden? I'm, I'm sorry, Sen. Do you mind if I begin with Senator Casper Bauer? Please begin. Senator Carmen Casper Bauer.
Thank you, Senator. Please forgive me if I don't mention each individual name, so we can go faster, but honorable senators, thank you for having this, and Senator T. Life, for spearheading these resolutions, and for all of you to be here, to hear us. Before I go on, I wanted to add a little humor with your interaction with Mike Phillips. I told him, I said, just tell him that we'll wait to war with them, and we'll use machete for our weapons. Because they seem to be always having the upper hand. Anyway, I'm Corinna Terrell Casper Bauer, I'm here to support Resolution 51 and 52, namely the Davis case and the dispute on the Chamor land trust. My stand on both issues is that the federal government has discriminated the indigenous people of Guam and their descendants since the beginning of their takeover our island as a spoil of their war against Spain in 1898. We were made a colony of America, and we're still a colony. Never mind that the Congress passed a law making the Chamors of Guam U.S. citizen. It was a deceitful gift of the U.S. federal government. They had to hastily introduce that bill and pass it without a public hearing with the people of Guam. So the people of Guam did not know that that bill was in the making, that that bill was passed, until one day, as a child, we were corralled out in the school court, and they raised the American flag, and they told us to pledge allegiance, because you're American. And I got mad, and I said, no, I'm Chamor. And they said, no, you're American. I said, I don't care, I'm still Chamor, I'm Chamor. I'm Chamorro. But for them to do that, I found out that they had hastily introduced that bill and passed it without a public hearing with the natives of Guam just to legitimize the forced taking of Chamorro lands before 1950. They took UPI from their Terro family before 1950, and gave force the family to have one-eighth of a penny a square meter. They did not pay for the EFO trees. And you know that UPI is not, was not jungle. It was a forest of EFO trees. And their Terros owned the land. And it takes at least five or six men with ostrich hand. That's how they used to measure the EFO trees. And they were cutting them down and dragging by boot cart to Togwak. Oh, by the way, UPI is Anglesundia Forest Base. And they're dragging it down to Togwak. And of course, Togwak is NCS now. And that was where our, the Artero saw meal, the only commercial saw meal on the island. And so the EFO lumber were being cut there. And the Artero were the provider of lumber, EFO lumber, to all the churches and all the homes in Guam. There are others, but, you know, on a smaller scale. But their Terro have the saw meal and the whole EFO forest up there. The military forced my grandfather's family to take the money, or else they were going to deport my grandpa to Spain because he was not a U.S. citizen. He was married to my grandmother before 1898. And during that treaty, my grandfather had a right to be a citizen of the island. But yet, he didn't know, and the family didn't know. And they were scared that they will deport my grandfather. So they accepted it reluctantly, and they all cried like... Because let me tell you, all of you Chamoros here, hang on to your land. You know what my father said when I was a little girl during the war? He looked at Togwak, which is NCS now, and he said, I'll translate for those who didn't understand. "Corin, look at this land. This is my father's land." And then he said, "But my father's land is not his land. It's my land." Then he looked at me and says, "But my land is not my land. It's your land." "Then protect the land for the children. The children of the future. But what do we do, us Chamorro? We want money. We want to have beautiful houses. So we sell our land, and many of our own relatives are becoming homeless. We have to stop that. And no federal government, no other government should take our rights to our own land and provide homes for our own people. And we have to, like I said, if we need to wait to war, we'll take our machete and war with the federal government. And showcase to the whole world. We were made a colony. We're still a colony. I don't care what you say. We're still a colony. And they're talking about discrimination. We're still being discriminated. I introduced the law that we should vote for precedent, and we do. But they never honored it. So they only care for us because of what they want from us. We should go to Sumai and wait to war there and take that land back and give it to the people of Sumai. So when Davis says, and any federal court say discrimination, they are the biggest bigots. They are the biggest discriminators and taking advantage of little people. And the whole world should know that. And so this is just part of my testimony. But we must continue the fight and not let it rest. We are kind and generous. Chamoros are always kind and generous. And we allow a lot of people to be here, and we share with them. But every country have their own rights to their identity, to their indigenousness. When you go to Japan, you respect and adhere to the Japanese way of life. When you go to the Philippines, the same. When you go to China or to Europe, why should we lose ours? You young people, I'm glad you're here. Please, fight hard. And all of you that are here. I'm 81. I'm at the end of the battle. But you are just emerging. So please continue to fight for our rights because you need it, not only for yourself, but for your children and your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren. Thank you. God bless you.
Situs Maasi, Senator Casper Bauer. Senor Agun?
...............
Situs Maasi. Senor Agun, Senator Cristobal?
My name is Situs Saludu. Prayum Zutodus. Situs Maasi. I'm here in support of both of the resolutions, 5134 and 5234. And I want to thank you because I see, Vice Speaker, your name on the resolutions. And I'm wondering whether any of you senators up there are going to be supporting this resolution after hearing all of us here today. We are not just a ragtag group of people here. We are here because we want to express our heartfelt petitions to you to continue the fight. And if I could... I don't know how many of you understood what Ray has just said. I don't know how many of you truly understood. But I'm sure that if you didn't understand his words, that you can perhaps absorb the vibrations and the vibes that he brought with him today. This is a very emotional time for our people. And I think we come here because we look at you as our leaders. We can touch you. We can feel you. You can talk. You can respond to us. And you're the only ones that we can hope to find a remedy for our problems here on our island. I do not have a prepared statement today, but I will speak from my own experience. As you know, I authored the Decolonization Commission law. As you know, I authored the Chamorro Registry law as a companion to the Decolonization Commission. That occurred after I returned from testimony in Congress in October of 1995, I believe, '96, when the House Resources Committee held a hearing on the Guam Commonwealth, the draft. We knew then, after that hearing, the sentiments, the two sentiments of the United States government. And we knew then that the United States government has failed us. The United States government continues to fail the people of Guam. If we fight the fight through the courts, there is little room through U.S. jurisprudence to win. But we will fight because that is what gives us hope, to see that our leaders are going to pick up the best that you know, what you have told us during the campaign, that you would stand by us. And we are looking to you to do that for us.
Helping people with the Chamorran Trust. And I hope that you fight that good fight. And thank you Senator. You recognize the need to touch base with the grassroots. I applaud that. And Senator Mike Siniklas, I applaud you looking for remedies. But you have to get our people's consent to move forward with a presidential vote. I'm sorry to say. I beg to differ with you. We need to not go that route at this time. So again, Guam with its dual personality of a non-self-governing territory. And you're made to address it and the recognition that you are a senator of a colony. You must realize that. You're a senator of a colony. We need dignity. And you are the leaders that will help us get our people to attain political dignity. And we look to you. We cannot just do lip service. We've got to fight tooth and nail. And a resolution must evolve into something bigger. Yes, let's take the fight to Congress. But let's fight. It's what gives us the energy. We need to energize our people right now. We are all lying down. We feel defeated because of these decisions by the US Department of Justice, by the district court, and all the talk by the media out there. You know, we need friends. But we also offer you our prayers as you do your work that is very difficult. Difficult decisions, knowing that you're just a senator of a colony. And I know you took the oath. But we need to begin to rethink that oath. Because the reality is, the fight that we're fighting is because we, the Chamorran people, are in our home. You know, I just saw my old professor here, Dr. Batances. And he drilled into our heads how home is a place you go to feel good. Isn't it? Home is a place you go to feel good. Yet when you look around our home, you look at the social statistics and you look and find out who is not feeling good in our home. It is not our visitors. It is not all those people driving around their BMWs. It is not these businessmen that have come out here to establish business because there's militarization of the Chamorran people happening. And they're going to exploit that. We are the ones that are not feeling good in our home. We occupy the lower statistics of our people. Our homeless are increasing. And voting for president is not going to remedy that. But fighting for dignity, fighting for political dignity is worth the fight. Just to add a little more, when you look around, we are the ones that are making the mistakes in our home. We are the most incarcerated people in our home. Those are all symptoms of being a colony. So we need to lift those burdens off the shoulders of our people so we can thrive. That's what we're looking at when we look at you. As everyone has expressed how youthful you all are. But behind that youth is the energy and some positive vibes that we get. And we hope and pray that you will all succeed for us. Sidoos Masih. And thank you very much. I'm sorry Senator, can I just finish? I'd like to invite all of you and everyone here in this room. We are holding a rally at Adeluk from 4:00 to 6:00 on the 31st of this month to express our Chamorran-ness and to request for respect for the Chamorran people. Today I brought this banner, "Respect the Chamorran People," to emphasize the fact that we need to improve in that area. Sidoos Masih. Sidoos Masih. Sidoos Masih Senator Cristobal. Francisco Mesa. Lassia Casil. You may proceed.
Hafadee, Vice Speaker and Senators. Sina Masih for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to testify in support of Resolutions Number 51 and 52. Sidoos Masih Senator Tulahe for moving swiftly to introduce these bills. My name is Lassia Casil. I'm the founder and president of Save Southern Guam. The resident of Santa Rita and Agit. My family is originally from Sumai. In 1865, African-Americans were granted 40 acres and a mule as reparations for the newly freed slaves. I'm not going to sit here and compare our plight to those of the African-Americans that were stolen from their homes and enslaved. That's not my point. My point is that the President of the United States and the US government took action to make right what was wrong. In 1868, they made all the former slaves US citizens, forbidding the states to restrict their rights. In 1870, the 15th Amendment was ratified allowing African-American to vote. This didn't include African women, but that's not my point. Again, the President of the United States took action to make right what was wrong. In 1941, the US government fled our island and left us to fend ourselves. When they came back, there was no reparations. They took our land. There was no citizenship. And even when we were granted citizenship, it's a second-class citizenship. Excuse me. 67 years later, we're still second-class citizens. The US government and the President has not taken any action to make any of these wrongs right. We are still fending for ourselves. We created the Chamorran Land Trust for ourselves. This is our 40 acres and a mule. We created the plebiscite for ourselves. This is our 14th Amendment. We are paying back our own war reparations from our own pockets because the US government still refuses to step up to the plate and make things right. With all due respect to Judge Diding from Gateway and her ruling, this proves that the game is rigged to systematically oppress our people for over 400 years based upon our race and then turn around and use those same rules put in place by foreigners, not our people, to deem us racist on a non-binding vote. Breaks my heart and my spirit, but it also makes me stronger. Senators, there's a monster that's eating away at our island, bite by bite. We're fighting it in Pago Bay. We're fighting it in Agit. We're going to fight it in Talafofo. We're going to fight it at Gun Beach, Lost Pond. It's all going to be gone. This is what we do at Save Southern Guam. It's the land that connects us to our culture. And without the land, we have no culture. Senators, I brought this book here today to share with you. It's a book about Sumai. In it, there's a list of 775 names. I'm not going to read them all out. I'm going to just add it to my testimony. And then there's many more names that need to be added to this. But twice a year, we're allowed to visit Sumai. We don't need to add another chapter to this book. We don't need a lost village of Zornia, or a lost village of Dedodo, or a lost village of Mariso until what? We have the lost island of Guam? And then what? Do we get to come here twice a year on Liberation Day and All Souls Day when there's nothing left for us? Going to be brief, but I want to close with this. My father served in the US military for 20 years. And when he came home, all he wanted was land to farm with. This is his land Chamorran Trust application. He's been waiting. Last year, my father, so old now, it's probably never going to, you know, I don't get it, he transferred it over to me. Other than my life, it's the most precious thing my father has ever given me. And I look forward to one day being the steward of this land and so many other people, all the other people waiting for their lands. The Senator said here. So please, I implore you Senators, please protect us, our people, our culture, our way of life, from further harm. Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih Lassia. Ray Luhon?
Buenas, Sena Hafadee, Vice Speaker Tulahe, and distinguished Senators. This is a very sacred and complex human right. So I thank you for giving us your time and hearing our voices. Yonanusi Ray Luhon, and I come before you all today on behalf of the Social Work Student Alliance at the University of Guam in support of both resolutions, I'm sorry, in support of both resolutions, both 51 and 52. As future social workers, we will soon be working with some of the most marginalized peoples in all levels of our society and in varying capacities. One of the bedrocks and foundations to our understanding of such issues were introduced to us upon entry of the social work program in a class called Social Justice. There, we learned the importance of the UN Universal Declaration of Human Rights and other international instruments which aims to promote and protect rights and social welfare. We learned of the history and context to which they were created, and we learned how influential such instruments are in guiding the practice and ethics of the field. The United Nations Permanent Forum on Indigenous Issues tell of indigenous peoples in context to political participation by stating that, quote, "Indigenous peoples often have much in common with other neglected segments of societies: lack of political representation and participation, economic marginalization and poverty, lack of access to social services and discrimination. Despite these cultural differences, the diverse indigenous peoples share common problems also related to the protection of their rights. They strive for recognition of their identities, their ways of life, and their right to traditional lands, territories, and natural resources," end quote. It is a sad time that we live in to see the selective application of the US Constitution come to the limelight in such an important month for our people, mes tomorrow, which once reminds us, which will remind us once more that we are but second-class citizens. It was one thing to learn how this instrument has violated the UN Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples in the onset of US colonization by taking land, displacing peoples and families, creating dependency, using our island merely for geopolitical military strategy, and banning the use of our native language. But it is another thing to witness it firsthand in 2017. The one thing that we have left to right the wrongs of the past and bring justice to our people was once more taken away for the benefit of non-natives. To add further insult, we were also called racist and discriminative in accordance to the 15th Amendment of the US Constitution, which is a product of the history of American racism. While I was devastated by the ruling, I come before you all with faith, with love, and hope that you, our leaders, will hear our voices, do what is right and just, and fight for our people. The true measurement of our colonization will be determined if we accept this ruling. So sidoos masih.
Sidoos Masih Mr. Luhon.
I'm sorry, she's not able to make it today, but I'm going to be speaking on her behalf.
All right. Could you state your name for the record?
Hafadee Torres, Guahu si Darren Pangolinan. Buenas, Sena Hafadee. Vice Speaker Theresa Tulahe and Honorable Senators of the 34th Guam Legislature. This testimony is presented on behalf of the Social Work Students Alliance, also known as SWASA, of the University of Guam. SWASA thanks you for this opportunity to present testimony in support of Resolution My name is Lacrisa Castro-Santos, and I'm a senior in the social work program. Resolution 51-34 is of great significance as it supports the government of Guam in gaining further assistance to defend the rights of the native inhabitants of Guam. It is rooted in the social work core values that we challenge social injustices by pursuing social change on behalf of those who are oppressed and for those who may not have a voice. As stated in the Social Work Code of Ethics, social workers strive to ensure access to equality of opportunity and meaningful participation in decision-making for all people. Resolution 51-34 will avail the people of Guam an opportunity to speak up on their right to self-determination. As a social worker student, resident of Guam, and descendant of a native inhabitant, I stand by the people of Guam in efforts to exercise our right to determine our future. Without this appeal, we continue to be oppressed in our own land. At this very least, the native inhabitants deserve to be heard. It is because the resolution greatly benefits our community, ensuring a chance at self-determination, that the Social Work Student Alliance stands in support of this resolution. Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih Darren Pangolinan and Lacrisa. And the Social Work Student Alliance, thank you very much. Rosario Perez? Ben Menno? Is Ben Menno still here? Rosario, you may proceed.
Hafadee Torres. Sorry, my voice is a little raspy. I just got a cold yesterday. Buenas, Sena Hafadee. Senator Munya. Senator Espaldan. Senator Torres. Senator Mike Siniklas. Senator Will Castro. Senator Julie Nelson. Vice Speaker Theresa Tulahe. Senator Vizco Lee. Senator Estevas. And Senator Morrison. Thank you for this opportunity to present my testimony in support of Resolution 51-34. Rosario Perez. I am Rosario Perez. I'm a student of the University of Guam, double majoring in social work and Chamorran Studies. Since high school, I have learned of the different colonial periods of Guam, particularly the colonial period we live in today. I have written all my papers and done all my projects on the colonialism of Guam, but I still feel that my knowledge of this subject is never satiated nor completed. My research has shown me that Guam became an unincorporated territory of the United States established by the 1950 Organic Act of Guam. Public Law 25106 specified the need for Guam's people to exercise the inalienable right to self-determination of their political relationship with the United States of America and described the right founded by the 1898 Treaty of Paris between the United States and Spain. The law specifies that those who are eligible to vote are the native inhabitants of Guam, which is defined as those who are made US citizens via the Organic Act in 1950, including their descendants. To an extent, I understand the reasoning behind the ruling of the Davis case defined through the US Constitution, but as a Chamorran and a native inhabitant, it's upsetting to hear that my right is racist and unconstitutional. This is an inalienable right that should be granted to all colonized people of the world. I may not be a lawyer, but the plebiscite to determine Guam's future is not meant to be exclusive, but rather, it is meant to empower the native inhabitants and the indigenous Chamorran people of Guam in their right to self-determination. The indigenous people of Guam are the Chamorran people. The native inhabitants are those who were made US citizens via the Organic Act. This includes the Chamorran people and any other person who was here on Guam in 1950. Personally, I have an issue with that, but I can settle. Just as the United States and other independent nations of the world exercise their right, it's time for Guam to decide. But it would be continued oppression to have those who were not native inhabitants nor indigenous Chamorran people decide our future. It is because this resolution benefits our community and helps in ensuring our right to self-determination, I'm here today speaking to all of you to support this bill, I mean, I'm sorry, this resolution. Ginini mastadung gi antihu purfaboat munamalefa ytahtau guahan. From the deepest part of my soul, please don't forget the people of Guam and the Chamorran people. Sina Masih. Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih Rosario Perez. Senator Menno? Is Ben Menno still here? Edward Cruz, Tressa Diaz, if you would like to testify, please have a seat in the front. Jose Garrido, Josette Kinata, Manny Duñez, Meganity, David Rabón, Michael Bevacua, Carlos Camacho, and Trini Torres. Mr. Garrido, you may proceed.
Un guaufinay by huquentos. Guasi se ujowa Garrido. I belong to the Garrido clan of the Homon Cliff Line. La boqueno is smoking. I think that there was enough said, by the way, I support both resolutions. I think that there was enough said about the history of Guam, the Mariana Islands actually, because we were separated in 1898. And so that history before that is Mariana's history. I know a little bit of the anthropological background of the island. I know a little bit about archaeology of Guam and the Marianas. I know the history of the Marianas and Guam. I am not an expert, but I can certainly find the answer to any questions that you might like to ask. I am also a WWII veteran. I am a victim of the most brutal treatment of Japanese occupation. I did not die, as you can see, but I was in Maningun. I was in Mata Talafofo where we lived for four years. And then we moved to Assam where I grew up to be a, how do you call that? Incorrigible young man. Going about their business, just being a happy-go-lucky young man until I found out that maybe I shouldn't be that happy. Enough has been said. I know that Attorney Phillips had actually rendered enough answers to the questions that we could understand, but we were not, we're not all attorneys. And I do not claim to be a lawyer. But I do know a little bit about laws and its contradictory ramification. And I know that in some part, some of these problems that we are encountering, we created ourselves. And I'm not blaming our past leaders for putting us in such a terrible situation as far as our human rights is concerned. They were only trying to help us, to protect us, and the best that they could imagine is that if we were a US citizen, that the federal government would not step all over us. That's the basic history of why our former leaders decided to go to Congress or to the President and ask if we could become US citizen. And we've been asking since 1899. And we have been turned down until 1950, in any case. Move fast forward. I can ask the question is, how can a Kanaka Moli not be a Kanaka Moli? How can a Samoan not be a Samoan? So my question to the district court and the Department of Justice is, how can I, a Chamorran, not be a Chamorran? How can I? I can't. So every perspective that I have, because, because this is the thought process as Chamorran that we're looking out for the best interest of our people, and they say that's racist. I don't want to venture to that anymore because there's enough racial, kind of, racial blame. But let me say something about that ruling. George Gaitwood listened to Dave Davis, and I'll bet she listened intensively, very, very intensively. It took her something, how many? Six months? And I'll bet you that her advisors are two races from the Navy who were attorneys. And even then, when there's a case in the district court, they would ask them to become a deputy US Attorney General. One being a person's last name is Lynch, the other one being Schwab. There might be another one whose last name is Sheldon. I know them well. Basically, these were attorneys who worked for the, for the federal government and are I know them well. I've been in this business since 1987. I'm 73 almost right now. I'm quite frankly, I'm tired of being an activist. I'm a nationalist so that I don't have to be going around being an activist physically, but I can be a nationalist in all aspects of my life. When George Gaitwood said... When Jarts Gatewood said, "I'm sorry, I understand that the Chamoros have been colonized for 1,000 years, and they've been dealt with, with all kinds of human rights violations." I have to rule in favor of Dave Davis because his 14 and 15 amendments' rights is being violated. For what? His right was being violated because we didn't allow him to participate to determine our political status. The question is, who is the self in the self-determination? The self is, quote-unquote, and not only the Chamorro people, but every community that has been colonized and have not exercised their right of self-determination. The non-self-governing people is the self in every plebiscite. And there are at least 17 or 19 non-self-governing people, including the Chamorro people, that have not yet been given the right of self-determination. It's recognized internationally and affirmed under international law that we, the Chamorro people in Guam, are the colonized people. Davis wanted to make sure that he be given the right to determine the political status of the colonized community. And that's where it gets deeper. When a person is given by the District Court, by the power of the Constitution, to participate and be with the people who are colonized to determine the political status of the colonized people, Davis was given a special right, which means that his right is paramount over us. Why? Because in fact, he's not making a determination of the political status of the island. He's making a political status or making a decision of what political status the Chamorro people should have. This right he didn't have before. He had a civil right that is accorded to him by the United States as an American citizen. And you know what? He had those full rights that we never did. That's what I'm saying is, if you look at this angle, that a person was given the right to determine, let's say, in Davis, the judgment gave me the right to determine what is this colonized Chamorro right, status is. Am I equal? No, I'm higher than her, because I am determining what is the political status of Trini. Why? There was no self-determination. The highest power of determination is self-determination. In other words, the person who is colonized shall exercise the right to decide by herself or himself, without outside interference, to determine whether he or she wants to be enslaved for 10,000 years or to be free forever. And we were given three political options, which of course, is not really statehood. It's not really a free association with the United States. Actually, the original is integration, full integration with an independent country. So we could have been, we could have voted maybe, if they allow us, to be full integrated with Australia, for example. Or we could be a free association of New Zealand. But no, we decided, because we've been colonized by the United States for 110 years, so we decided that maybe we'll stick around with, you know, I gotta admit, senators, the United States is the best colonizer in the world, you know? But that's not the argument here. The argument is human rights. And under the principle of decolonization, economics and your, and the population of the colonized is irrelevant. If there's two or one Chamorro on Guam, and he's the only remaining Chamorro in the world, he has the right of self-determination to determine what political status he wants to be in. It has nothing to do with big population. In any case, that's just my argument, not being an attorney, I don't know how I can legally articulate that, but I'm just saying that the ruling that was handed down by Jarts Gatewood, poor Jarts Gatewood, is that he gave Mr. Arnold Dave Davis special power, the right over us to determine our future. I don't know if you could see that. But are we supposed to interchange with, in a testimony or shift to Chamorland Trust? Because I have a document here that I don't know if you folks have ever seen it. I just want to explain, maybe two minutes?
Yes, I, the hearings technically separate, but I'll allow you, since you've been waiting to go ahead and put your testimony on the record right now for the Resolution 52.
Are we, are we doing a Chamorland Trust testimony today?
Yes, Resolution 52 is after the, this Resolution 51, but I'll allow you, if you want to conclude it in two minutes, I'll allow you to do that right now.
I actually took four hours of annual leave to be here, but I'm going, have to go back. I'm still, I'm an activist, but I have to work for a living, so, you know, unlike Dave Davis, he didn't have to. Let me, let me show something here. I hope I articulated enough with regards to my testimony on the, on the ruling, that our rights, if we exercise all by ourselves, is unconstitutional, all right? But this, oh, you see, sometimes when you are an activist, you live in a state of confusion and chaos. In any case, I'm holding a document here that gave birth to the Chamorland Trust, and the entity that required that is the US Congress. This one is the United States Department of the Interior Office of the Secretary, February 26, 1952. I don't know if you've seen this, my dear Governor Skinner, and it was a letter from Director Chapman, Secretary of the Interior, back then. He said, "By virtue of this conveyance, the government of Guam obtains a fee simple, determinable title to the lands so transferred. The government of Guam may, without the approval of the Secretary of the Interior, sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of any of these lands, 30,000 acres." They thought that they took too many acres from the Chamoros. In fact, at the time, they owned 80% of Guam. So they realized, man, we gotta give those land back, you know? So they gave 30,000 back when they established the government of Guam by the Organic Act. Lease otherwise dispose any of these lands for, one, rehabilitation and resettlement purpose; two, homestead purposes. The conveyance had been made to the governor of Guam in order to ensure the successful completion of the Guam Rehabilitation and Resettlement Program, which was initiated by the federal government to make lands available for homestead purposes, to enable the governor of Guam to give adequate consideration to the matter and other long-range public purposes, and to accommodate substantially the legitimate desire and aspiration of the people of Guam, that the public lands of Guam be administered locally and be made readily available to meet their land requirements." They're not talking about Dave Davis. They're talking about us, Chamoros. Let me show you what is... You know, there's a lot of legal, uh, state-written words in here, but let me go down. "Whereas Section 40 of Public Law 33 of the First Guam Congress, approved August 29, 1951, directs the following priorities shall be observed with respect to the sale and lease of government real property for residential or agricultural purposes. First, persons who have had all their land," they use the nice word, acquired, but let me change that, "persons who have all their lands taken by the United States, the naval government of Guam, and the government of Guam, and who have owned no other lands since January 1, 1946." So it's just saying that these returned lands is to give some of those properties to those Chamorro people whose land were taken. Second, persons who have had a substantial portion of their land taken by the United States naval government, government of Guam, since July 1, 1944, which is my grandfather's property included, the remaining portion whose land is not adequate or sufficient for reasonable agricultural or residential purposes. The rest is for rehabilitation of the war-torn PTSD Chamorro people. And this is the purpose that gave birth to the Chamorland Trust. It was not a Chamorland Trust, it became the Arrendo. But many of our people didn't follow through with the intent, and so quite a few lands came developed. And I don't want to venture in that, because everybody make mistake. But Senator, the late Senator Paul Vodogio, and everybody with him, decided to sit down and said, hey, let's see if we can accomplish some dignity here and find the answers to our people or homeless and all that, and they came up with the Chamorland Trust. This is the answer to that Dave Davis, because those lands in the land trust did not, we didn't receive that through the goodness of the United States. Those lands actually were lands taken from our people, then, and, to somebody, it's just that that's unconstitutional? I'm just letting you know that the land trust not developed initially by our, by our people. It was developed by Congress in allowing the Secretary of the Interior to come up with some kind of a redress for all the things that was done to our people. And many of us have suffered that. I don't have any land in the Chamorland Trust right now, but all our property were taken by the military on both my mother and my father's side. And am I bitter? What do you think? I wasn't born, in closing, I wasn't born an American citizen. I was not, never was. They passed the Organic Act when I was seven. Nobody asked me to be an American citizen. What they forgot to do is that, and even our own people, Congress, is to pass a law that says that once a Chamorro reaches the age of 18, they should actually go into a federal office, the District Court, and declare your citizenship. I don't believe that they could pass a law that made people citizens. And when they passed the Organic Act that made people citizens of the United States here in Guam, they made thousands of people who had died US citizens. Think about that. Pass a law and make people US citizens in Pigo Cemetery. My grandfather and, and my mom and my father, my grandfather, my grandparents were not US citizens. They have been abused and disused, and their human rights have been violated by the United States, and counting. I'll continue to fight this by any means. At some point in the future, if we can't resolve diplomatically, we resolve it by all the means.
Mr. Garrido, okay, I want to thank all of you again for your patience. I know it's taking a while, but thank you very much for your patience, and thank you to my colleagues who have been here all morning, and I really thank you for, for sticking with us, okay? And so I'm gonna repeat the names, we've got Josette Canata, Manny Duñez, I think he's not here, Meganity, David Rabon, are you here? Not here, okay, Mike Bevacua, Carlos Camacho, Trini Torres, Ronald Leguatna, okay, Net Pablo, and Frank Munoz. And then we have a shortlist after that, Rosa Paloma, Neves, Shannon McManus, Jonathan Glaser, Catherine McCollum. Yes, sir.
Senator, I'd like to ask if there's any questions?
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to mention your name. Thank you, Sitos Masi. And after that will be Alyssa Eclavea and Desiree Ventura. If anyone else would like to testify, please sign your name over at the counter and, oh right, we'll begin with... Josette?
Buenos dias, Senators, Dankulu Nasizos Masi, for allowing me the opportunity to address... address you today and to lend my voice and my words not to our struggle, but to our hope, that one day we will be able to decolonize our island by decolonizing our minds and lives. In our own healing from colonialism and historical trauma, I offer you this testimony and my full support in this resolution as positive energy and renewed strength in our connected journey forward where we advocate and affirm what we have and what is innate to ours. See, this is what I feel, deep from within. It's a struggle all inside, but it's real emotion. It's the pain I feel as I try to free the true voice inside, the Chamorro in me. As I sit here thinking about their politics, I get lost because I can't understand our statistics. They teach me to be free, yet I know I am denied a true American. What about the Chamorro plan? It's our heart, our strength, our homeland. You know it's in its name, Guam. It's more than paradise to us. It's a world on its own, meant for the Chamoros, the souls buried in the lighting stones. We are us amid internal interpersonal power differential. An inmate has to face the calamities and injustices of interment camps imprisoned in their minds. A delegate is only represented, her mere presence is dismissed, and her voice silenced by an administrative power refusing to acknowledge her need. A non-self-governing people die for democratic principles when their own sovereignty and innate human right is abrooded as that of their jungles, water, air, homes, lives, and mines. Ital-ta-tanu continue to get massacred as our young face the brunt of wars, positioned in a global world that does not acknowledge our existence. We are foot soldiers being dragged into bloody wars tortured by the aftermath of post-traumas that forever change our mental images as abruptly as typhoons destroy our homes and permanently affect our landscape. Their mission is our self-demise as we falsely blame each other and point fingers placed on triggers that strategically whip apart our families and cultural identity, our self-worth. We place value on Uncle Sam and the Commander-in-Chief rather than on our own uncles, aunts, nieces, nephews, and relatives. We use capitalism to measure others' worth in currencies before ever attempting to acknowledge our innate invaluable resources, ourselves. Our manina cry out as we chant in a choir of confusion, where elites rule over the humble, deepening our disconnection to each other as massive as the Marianas Trench. Indigenous soldiers of a colony carry out missions where democratic principles are spread and fought for, as these warriors return home to a non-self-governing territory where lands inherently theirs are eradicated as others' possessions. Ownership must be paid and dues before being bought out. The gamble is not a risk. It's already been decided. We are owned. Children are told somewhere in a far distant land there exists a better life that is unlike them. Our children swear in to give up of themselves and fight for principles that were explicitly taken away from us, as implicitly as they implicitly bartered atomic bombs in Agent Orange and burial sites into a nation, a culture, and a people that existed before the US. We were us before the US. Our waters are polluted with contaminated language that curse our confidence, self-esteem, worth, and dignity as toxic cycles and systems that once allowed slavery and dehumanized people as objects of commerce, traded warriors for wars, sovereign lands for military fortresses, culture for assimilation, native for naive, guahan for have-nots, macronisia for valiant shield, jungles for live-firing ranges, matrilineal for a patriarchal society, sina for administering powers, enafa malik for self-greed, the Emperor of Japan for the insular empire, an educational system for military recruitment and ASVAB dispensaries, indigeneity for immorality, and sovereign for forced colonization. This forbidden truth shames our authenticity. Our lands are untouched by the families that once thrived and lived there as armies and machinery receive orders to destroy, bruise, abuse, torture, and kill roots that interconnect our bloodlines and histories. The present is a reflection of past trauma. Where in the absence of an abuser, we physically, emotionally, mentally, and spiritually abuse ourselves, professing to do it for monetary gain and a false sense of liberty. We no longer are just occupied or colonized. We have been conquered and minimized to that of a location, a battleground, a strategic military base, and now an option for a live-fire training range. We still exist and are still alive. In the hearts of our people, we will forever thrive. This recent ruling of Davis v. Guam is not representative of my Chamorro culture, but rather the totality of Chamorro colonization. It is illustrative of the elements that impact our lives due to living through the internal wars of a colonial system embedded in the unconscious conscience of dysfunctional systems imposed on our familia. The once-organized, unincorporated territory is once again starting to believe in her own self-determination and freedom, her innate beauty and value, her indigeneity, sacredness, and story. Don't let their constitution define Chamorro rights. Don't let their injustice define our indigeneity. Don't let your voice be silenced when your people are looking to you as leaders to advocate not for a plebiscite, but for our next generation. Don't let the future of our people end here. Don't let the US define us.
Thank you very much, Josette Canata. I have next Maganiti. Mr. Camacho needs to leave. Is it okay if he goes first with that?
My daughter.
Yeah, right? I know everybody probably needs to leave, but is it... Gobalagangin, if he goes first, see Mr. Camacho?
Can I speak first? I'm gonna pick up my daughter to school.
Okay. I know he needs to go pick up his child, so please proceed, Mr. Camacho. And then we'll have...
Thank you. Vice Speaker, Honorable Senators, after sitting out here for a couple of hours, I realized you were in Resolution Fifty-One, but I saw a lot of mix of Fifty-One and Fifty... I mean, Resolution Fifty-two dash thirty-four and Fifty-One dash thirty-one, so I hope I could speak on Fifty-two dash thirty-four. Earlier today, I was listening to, of course, the passionate discussions with a lot of our indigenous friends here in the session hall, especially with Attorney Mike Phillips on certain parallel vehicles that we could use in Congress to identify probably solutions. So for the record, my name is Carlos Camacho. I'm here as a private citizen. My main expertise is in housing. So as I know the impact on the Fair Housing Act and the discriminatory sanctions that it has on the market, the markets without the land trust restrictions, I understand what they're looking for and why they're claiming that there are some violations in the Fair Housing Act. But what I wanted to just share, just for the record, is that ironically, like Attorney Mike Phillips says, if we have certain vehicles that is already in Congress that identifies us as a qualified land trust community, then maybe that's a vehicle we should do and work with Congresswoman Bredalio. I was talking to his Chief of Staff, John Calvo, earlier, and I wanted to share the things I found during my tenure in the housing development. Congress passed a law, Public Law One-O-Two dash Five-Forty-Seven, and that law is catered to the Native American Home Loan Program for Native American. That's in nineteen ninety-two. In nineteen ninety... Let me get this correct. In nineteen ninety-seven, five years later, and that was passed, Governor Carl Gutierrez, Secretary of Veterans Affairs Jesse Brown utilized that law to promote a Native Indigenous Chamorro Veterans Program through a MOU with the government of Guam through one of its housing authorities, which is Guam Housing Corporation. And that's here, signed into law by the Secretary of Veterans Affairs in the United States Government, authorized by the Senate and the House in Congress. So what I did is I took this MOU in nineteen ninety-seven. I decided to look at the different US code that was referencing this MOU, and it referenced One-O-Two-Five-Forty-Seven. And like Mr. Garrido, that he found another statute to the Department of Interior, I want to read one paragraph that defines why they use this vehicle to provide to an indigenous Chamorro, which are veteran Chamoros. And that's why that's the conflict with probably one arm of the federal government saying that we're indiscriminatory, but maybe through a congressional action like this, we are not discriminatory because it's going to an indigenous family. So let me just read that one section of this law. What this law says in Section D is on any island in the Pacific Ocean, if such land is the cultural tradition, comma, "communally-owned land and determined by the secretary." It's a very short paragraph, so I did further research, and "communally-owned land" is basically land owned by the government as a whole. So we met that definition. So based on that law, in nineteen ninety-two, under Governor Gutierrez and Madeline Bredalio's time, they took that and persuaded the US Secretary Jesse Brown to sign a MOU. Guam was given forty million dollars for the Native veterans to build their home. The reason we haven't used those funds is, one, we don't have the infrastructure resources, as we all know, that's why there's eight thousand or five thousand people waiting in the waiting list. We got the land, but we don't have the infrastructure. So based on this, in two thousand eight, Governor Felix Camacho contacted US Secretary of the United States Department of Agriculture to see if we could be part of SURA. Now, SURA is known as the substantially undeserved trust area. And what that is, is basically the infrastructure program to provide water, sewer, roads through a federal vehicle. Remember, I just mentioned the veterans vehicle, so the SURA is under the United States Department of Agriculture. That's two thousand eight when the request came in. Can I use my glasses? In June thirteen, two thousand twelve, the US government code of federal regulations, code and quantified that law, and under SURA, under Section Seventeen-hundred dash One-O-Five, here's what they stated. And this is documents by the federal government as providing these programs to indigenous community. It said, letter F, "Evidence that land is located on Guam, American Samoa, or the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands," and they tied this other federal partner to this veterans' program, "and is eligible for the use in the Veterans Administration Direct Loan Program for the veterans of purchasing or constructing homes or on communally-owned land." So in two thousand twelve, we finally got an infrastructure vehicle. Now, what I'm trying to say here is these are the tools that you, the policymakers, can use on your... Working with Madeline Bredalio and Congress to say, while one arm of the government is saying that we're in violation of the Fair Housing Act in race, color, and creed, we got another arm that recognizes us in Public Law One-O-Two-Five-Forty-Seven and the law that Mr. Garrido had mentioned with the Department of Interior. We got conflicting laws that already identify us to use these programs defined under those two vehicles for Guam under the land trust definition of these laws. So like Attorney Mike Phillips, when I was hearing him talk with Senator Max Nikolas, is if there is, if there was already precedents, if there is a case studies, why can we take this now and say, oh, by the way, yes, you did cite us in the violation of Fair Housing Act under race, color, and creed, but ironically, you provided a federal legislation to provide it to an indigenous group, which is our veterans, which is the well-deserving, well-deserving, but we have a federally recognized indigenous Native American Chamorro veterans that is qualified. So I just want to share that for the record to show that there are two different federal arms. Of course, I'm assuming that the US Department of Justice, and I gotta be very careful to say this because I do have a lot of federal programs, I'm doing another hat of wear, so I don't want to get slapped in my hand, because we don't violate FHA, knock on wood, but I'm just sharing that there are different resources that one is stating it's available through an indigenous group and identify Guam in the word, in those public laws as US Senate and House, but I never seen this mentioned, like somebody said, on case studies when they were fighting this in court. So these are things that I already provided to the Speaker of the House, and I'll provide this to the rest of the senators, but it is a tool that's available. It's a tool that recognizes Guam as a communal land trust property to true federal agencies. And that's all I gotta say. I just wanted to share that on my knowledge in the housing industry, that these are programs that are available immediately for land trust properties. I think that if we want, we can utilize, and thanks to Senator Tom Ada, who now finally put the missing piece to this. Remember, we got the SURA program, but it is a program by the RES, Rural Utility Service, but you needed a source of funding to take this resource available, and Senator Ada finally passed a law to take CLTC commercial land, and I know there was a lot of conflict between that, but to take the revenues to benefit the indigenous families who want to build homes so we can bring the proper water, power, and sewer. That was the missing equation so that we can finally give all these lands out. So you got all the tools, you got the fifteen senators here that can take this and work with our governor and our congressional branch and pass policies to leverage these programs so we can finally bring infrastructure to our Chamorro indigenous families. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camacho. Maganiti.
Buenos dias. Guau. Si magalai, maganitin rebeto. Guau guine, mato guine puso nganikwantus magai. Maseya tamanun, mana puti tau-tau nisintenya. Lo nisitaikwantus magai puma songan. Sa, ai Guam. Ikwantus magai guine, ang constitutional, ang constitutional. Hamzuni man senidot. Umpeka kanaimo gi biblica, no? Gi inauguration. President, legmu I swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. Gi magai zo, right? Kwantus magai. Ngigi constitutional of the United States, trust gi biblica. Legne gi biblica, da I shall not lie. Hafana si gai dokun la-la Guam. Sa taze guine constitution, taze guine US citizen. Ni hazi ya gi zahita, maseya hamzuni mus... Now I can translate everything I just said, because I know not all of you understand what I said, but please do not believe me. You are a puppet government of Congress created by Congress. All laws in Guam is unconstitutional because it's up to Congress, it states that in the Organic Act. Why don't we go to the Treaty of Paris? Why don't we go to the United Nations, which the United States has signed? And they're the ones that put us in. Why do we have to continue hurting our own people because of the US laws, which is thousands of miles away? We have to have, we have to go to America and go, "Master, can I have permission to grab my people's land? Can I have permission for open skies? Can I have this? Can I have that? Please give us permission, my master." That's what we do. When is that to end? Why can't we just say, "There is no constitution on Guam. Those laws that Gateway or Hartwood or whatever her name is says for Arnold Davis is inappropriate, it should not even stand in court, for it is all based on lies." If you break the US Constitution, Bill of Rights, and every document you can find, based by Britain, by America, everything is false on Guam, it's a force, so lies. Why do we allow it? To rule us, to ruin us. Why do we allow it? One reason is, we've lost confidence. Second reason is money, for the love of money. Furthermore, that is the truth. In psychology, that is the truth. And I thank America for forcing me to learn, because when I was a child, I was punished for speaking my native language. That's why today, I don't even know how to, I'm not good at reading or writing, but let's see, when it comes to the white man, I'm very good, but hey, I'm very good, because he was forced down my throat. So I'm throwing it back. Now, break, go into those treaties, go into those paperworks, those documents, because this is all a force. We shouldn't even be here today for this. Arnold Davis should have never won nothing, because constitution, unconstitutional, hell, the Constitution doesn't even apply on Guam. Thank you.
It's a place where you get lost. the legal place for the manatee is [speaking Spanish]. There's always an entrance, there's no exit. [speaking Spanish] And so, [speaking Spanish] It's stacked completely against us. [speaking Spanish] It is designed to remove our rights and our claims, not to protect them. [speaking Spanish] And so, [speaking Spanish] just because it's unconstitutional does not mean it is immoral, or just because Guam West [speaking Spanish] inorganic, unconstitutional, it does not mean that it is not right. And so, [speaking Spanish] and [speaking Spanish] even if we don't win, [speaking Spanish] for those of us stuck inside the maze of colonialism, the native maze of domestic dependency, [speaking Spanish] we have nothing that is very firm about our position. Low, we do have spaces where we can voice our opinion and try to tell our story. And so, [speaking Spanish] You know, when you think about what the United States was supposed to be founded upon, and ideals and such like that, it's very fascinating how those ideals evaporate when it comes to the colonies, except in the name of depriving the colonies of the very things which the founding fathers were fighting for. And so, it is expected, but it is unfortunate. And so, [speaking Spanish] every place that we can, where we can tell our story and try to get the United States or the rest of the world, or even our own people here, to understand this is not about the US Constitution. As one of the senators up there, when I was talking to him the other day, Senator Estevez said, "The US Constitution may be the law of the land, but it is not the law of the world." And you shouldn't assume that for colonized people, the Constitution should apply like that. And so, the more that we can convince the United States, our own people and everyone else, to see us as we really are, not as America in make, as a territory becoming part of the United States, always being included, but as a colony that needs to make a choice about what we want next. And so, [speaking Spanish]
[speaking Spanish] We have Trinity Torres next. Okay, and I thank you again for your patience. I thank my colleagues for being here, and I know I promised them I would limit the testimony to five minutes, and I haven't been doing that, so I just ask you to please just be mindful that we still have, and I wasn't aware till now, on Resolution 52, we still have three pages of people who wanted to testify, and some of them had to leave. So if we could just yell out for everybody, thank you so much, and thank you for waiting. And Trinity, it's, Ms. Torres, please proceed.
Oh, wow, thank you. [speaking Spanish] [speaking Spanish] I'm going to say, I'm going to say, nation, person, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. No, she got a lot of activity, in the city. Low, in the city, she got too many, low. I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. She's going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. It's all, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. So, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. So, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. Okay. Uh, I'm going to say, English, for offer, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. Okay, I support both Resolution 51, 52. And, um, the thing is, you know, when we're talking about self-determination, and, uh, Mike Phillips was here, and you're asking so many questions, yes. But I believe that self-determination should not just stay in the courts of the U.S. Because whenever you stay in the courts of the U.S., you're going to lose, no matter what. When you're using their own court system, you're going to lose. So, that's why we need to continue onwards towards the international court system. Because the United Nations, you know, they support us. And even the U.S. signed the Charter of the United Nations as one of the primary, uh, members. And, uh, the U.S. have to abide, they promised to abide, they're obligated, and, uh, they, they committed themselves to abide by what, whatever resolutions, or whatever the activities the United Nations is going to undertake. Though they don't always, but the U- United Nations can force them by telling them certain things, visiting to the, visiting them to the Washington, DC, and telling them, and, uh, by embarrassing them, too. You know, by publicizing things and telling the rest of the world that this is how the U.S. is behaving, and not listening to them. I myself went several years ago. And, and the reason why, I guess I feel comfortable going to the United Nations, because after working in Africa, I worked for the United Nations there. I was doing medical research, scientific medical research for the, for the university in Ethiopia. And I went all over the country, uh, doing my research. But then, during the revolution, and I'm not talking about living under a combination, too, dictatorship. I lived under that. But I worked for the United Nations in Africa. That's why I'm comfortable. Because I spent about three and a half, almost four years with them. And I wrote so many articles for the reports on different countries. And I became kind of like, just drafted editors, because I was good in writing. And I was even asked to write so many speeches for the Secretary General of the UN Headquarters there. So, and I also have a daughter. A daughter is, could be natural birth, right? Or you could have raised, reared. So, I have one that I raised. In fact, two kids from Africa. So, I have one working at Geneva, in International Court. Okay, in Geneva, Switzerland. So, I went there, but I, I know how the system works. And that's what I was pressing you guys, and you should look into that. I even gave, when I came back, I collected those brochures on how to complain to the United Nations. Because I did complain, I wanted to complain, and officially, you have to write it down, you know? So, I gave him those booklets to read through and, and see how we can, uh, put our case through. But I did write complaints, and I even had, uh, for more nations also sign along with me, that the U.S., it has been violating our human rights. And that the, the United Nations is obligated to confront the U.S., to help us, to lift those violations from us. That means remove, because they're still violating us, they're colonizing us. And they asked me, in fact, they talked to me in person, and also asked me a lot of documents, which I provided. I brought, brought it there, in all those documents I brought, and I submitted them. And I attended the, the conference there, and I read my statement out, and I, I did accuse the U.S. publicly, in my statement, that they violated our human rights. And they had been blocking our rights to self-determination. And that's why we have not exercised it, even up to now. So, they should have all those documents. It's not that we have not complained to the United Nations. We have. And I have the documents, and we have some of the letters in the folder that you have, Vice Speaker. You know, because I, I also took the, the, our case, their fishing, uh, the fishing problem that we're having here to the United Nations, and I talked to them about it. And, and that thing is in that folder, too. So, we have to really push upwards, not just depend on the U.S. courts. Because we'll never get ahead. Even with the Organic Act, they did their best, I know. Because they provided some things for us. Like some things that, uh, you know, goes for inequity, like the, similar to, in fact, the organic, I mean, the Chamorlan Trust, which is similar in, in, like a program as the, in comparative to the affirmative action that the minorities, especially black Americans, were given in the States. I know also how it works. Because when I work in the States, for some reason, I took the test and everything to get into an insurance company. And I, my grades were so high, and they hired me. Because, you know, I was very good in math and English and this and that. So, they used my name as one of the minorities to fit into the affirmative action. I said, fine with me, that's fine. Because even private companies hire minorities, colored people, under affirmative action. So, you know, things like the Chamorlan Trust is an inequity type of program that the U.S. government, especially Congress, passes in order to alleviate or eliminate some of those inequities that have been mistreating us with, the injustices they have been, uh, doing to us. So, that's why, in the meantime, while we're working to follow through with the Chamorlan Trust, we should go also to the United Nations in New York City and in Geneva. Remember, Geneva has been the first U.N. part, first U.N. building, called the Human Rights, right? And then they built the other one in New York City. But Geneva is still standing. And they're the ones taking care of human rights. So, if we have complaints with human rights, we should take it there, as I have already started doing. So, we should, we should not stop. And, uh, we should never give up. By the way, support the, uh, Resolution Number 52 also, on Chamorlan Trust. But let me tell you the story of our people, so you remember. Because history has, was not taught to our people. When we're small, they didn't teach us in English. We were, we were taught in English. Every, all the books were in English and everything. And we were punished if, if we spoke our language. Okay. When the Spaniards came to our island, okay? And I'll say our island, because it's my island, too. And I don't care who says it's not my land, it's my land. We have fought, our ancestors have fought for our land. The Toto Go people, mind you, that has been, had been, the biggest village in Guam. The biggest, Sengson. It occupied areas up to Manila, all the way to Barigada, Canyada, Barigada, in Toto, Dangmungmu, Mai Chi, down Aniwa, down Adeluk, Maena, all the way to Sinahanya, all around. I know, because I live in Toto Go, I still live there now, we still have a family property. And they did, military took some of it, but we refused to give it up. We refused to lease them, and it's still our land. So, that's what we're still fighting on, even up to now. That pipeline that goes through Toto is still my land. It doesn't belong to the military, I don't care what they say. Because if they do, they do something to me, there's always something I can do. I'm not going to be jumping east and then west. And if they close the road, and, you know, they divided that, I will go to war with them. I can explode that pipe, and they know that. No, but they should know that. Just like what's going on in the pipeline, going to Alaska. Okay, that's what one Chamorran woman fought, my mother, to let them open the gate that runs through the pipe. And so, we never gave up our land. They did not take it, they cannot take it. And we, we refused to lease it. So, we, if my mother, who just got up to third grade, that time, and I could understand what she was going through, we can fight. And the Toto Go people fought with their life against the Spaniards. And they didn't have any weapons, no arms, nothing, except their fists and their, you know, spears, what they made. And, sorry, but I have to finish this story about our people. They fought with nothing. There are the Toto Go people, I told you the areas, they encompassed the biggest, uh, Sengson. The Spaniards, you know, they, they kill our people, and mostly the women, because they're the Magahagas. They don't like women to be the leaders. That's why our women disappeared. The Magahagas, because the Spaniards killed them all. But we're coming back, and I'm one of them. Okay, now, the point is, they fought for their life. For three and a half years, they kept fighting guerrilla warfare with the Spaniards, and they got so scared, but they didn't give up. And how the Spaniards were trying to, to defeat our people, they were telling our other people from somewhere, from other villages, not to associate with the people from Toto Go. Because it would be a sin if you believe in the spirit, in our people, our Toto Go people. But what happened? Those people turned out to be our ancestral spirits. So, do not be afraid. They were teaching our people that they're the devils, the spirits of our ancestors. The Toto Monas, what I'm referring to. Those are your great-grandfathers, your great-great-grandmothers, everybody, your ancestors, my ancestors. So, that's how they fought. They fought, they were defeated, they were all killed, but they fought for their life. I just want to tell you, they were courageous. So, you need to build that courage with you. Because they fought with everything, with their hearts and their minds, to allow us to live today. That's your history now, don't forget it, nobody told it to you. But it, you can find it in all the history, if you can, if you read. Because I studied our history to the detail. So, that is our history. Toto Monas, it's not to be feared, they can help us. But you have to be careful, because they know, they may understand what we're speaking about, but maybe we can be miscommunicating, and it could be more dangerous than what you ask. That's all I ask, tell you. But I can speak to them. My, my brothers used to speak to them, and it did work, I know. I've experienced some of the things that they did to help us. And that is through our land, you know, gaining our land. Somehow, they could make heavy equipment stop, because that's what we asked them for, to stop those heavy equipment from going through the land and, and bulldozing all those trees to build whatever they want. They stopped that, because we asked our ancestral spirits. We talked to them, and they did it. Mind you, those people knew who they were, because they could not restart their equipment. The bulldozers, their shovels, their everything. They could not restart it with all the mechanics they brought in there. They had to use the trailer to take them out, okay? So, do not be afraid of our ancestral spirits, because they are here with us.
Okay.
Yes, they are, I believe that. Okay, thank you.
Sidoos Masri. Okay, Senor Juan Leguanyer, Ned Paplu, Frank Munoz.
Okay.
Um, Rosa Palomo, Dr. Palomo. Nieves, Shannon McManus, Jonathan Glaser, Catherine McCollum, Desiree Ventura, Elisa Eclavea. What this will be, hopefully, the, all of the remaining ones to testify on Resolution 51. I apologize again for the long time, but Sido, uh, Leguanyer, please, please proceed.
Sidoos Masri, Trini. Then, uh, we're going to say, we're going to say, look. I'm going to say, I'm going to say, for you to hear. All of them are going to say, I'm going to say. I'm 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 going to say, I'm going to say. Si aniti. Si daddo. Si pagat. Si offing. Todo iman manilutan iman gaegi gwinni. Motucina ma'gu frisinintekku samandanya inashon. Anuk imatan momi. Ti tauta timan ma'otanam pabifangaegi gwinni. Lo mandanya ni maneluhu. Enigi, enigi, tapandanya lai. Za hutuna ho loke sa inagehilo. Si difunto. Si Ben, pangilinani te luta. Gwiza loke sa ono gi esti na mumu. Todo si senador neosunestapapagu. Gwiza nasenado talu gaegya. Za gwiza premier na nedikiki au. Gwiza fominu tamomaru. Gwina gwiza fominu tauta nu. Za edzigi na hutuna ho. Hutuna ho todo samzu. Ua biba todo samzu. Tat kilo na tenaduzu zani stahu noi hamzoo. Za monmu ngipumalu. Na fan meshnu namzu. Ta mumu zisti sta guatu hululu Amerika. Za ungan na calik kalansina ta sa'anga ni te luta si aniti. Lo gi managai reno. Ma'gai chi aniti. Za to matatuzu pori hinengenyaza ni finonya. Za enigi ki malofan tempo. Edusha iman Americano. Ifiri Raulis timatungo, ifina Lofanta. Disti Espanyol. Disti Tempun Japones. Desti Americano. Chi ga estapagu ma'mohonyu hit. Pesh mayla fan zatapandanya. Enigi pa'gu bidanasti. Hanapandanya hit. Udi sesia pa'gu iman maniluta genon gi publiku. Put pa'bu zamaknata. Zatapandanya zatapandatso para esti. Estigi mostat kilo. Za hunalaknu spagu pinitiu kosaki xinyadzu maigoo. La mo'na. Za hutuna hamzoo. Ua biba hamzoo talu. Senadorra. Donkulu na omru. Todo samzu ni mangai gya genon pa'gu na momentu. Sen importantisti. Nisi sita esti. On agan todo iman pumalu. Zata speftai mano zata chonik esti. Ta pa'tautzung si Marilyn. Imaga lohi zatapandanya todo tauta guahan. Put pa'bu. Ta fangaesini esti diretsu esti. Gini ni manainata. Ifinota. Finatinasas du tauta. Edzigi no lalaknuz. Gini ni spiritu ni manainata. Edza pabishangan, Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Senor Leguanyia. Si Ned, Ned Pablo.
Buenas. Guau si Ned Pablo. Estabe sa'anga ungan u supporti anona Resolution. Ni pun kontra. Za munapumara pun kontra. U.S. District Court. Za masea haji ni peroki nentrayit. Put perou mana libyonu sia kuncha hita. Hita tauta tauta nu. Hita i duinunesti. It Chamorro. Za feririano ti hita na maissa. Man malagu perou madzudu adzirit za perou fana gotti koni Chamorro Notimranas. Man interes ombe skada dia karami nutu. Si ga mahalun it Chamorro no'gu za it Chamorro Notimranas za esti mogi guahan. Si ga man masasangan in sopotiau ni ofa bidodamu. In sopotiau put todo unchochib na unmi mu'nuzi para idiretsu za ni irension it Chamorro. Gini gi gwinho ta guahan. Estigi si Luis Manglonia asawonu. Respect kun respetu za saluru para tori tauta guahan. Pandanya za inapan palapa ibanderan mi'zu. Sa hami gi zamaronis in sopotiau samzu sentu put sentu. Puti diretsu mi'zu na iman Chamorro. Pesh fan asusenti kanai za gof adai na u mokthus. Na fan meguramzu. Put utimus in guajzaamzu. Sa si jus in fan gi niha mo'na. Gini luta memorias. Pesh ti hita na maissa. Estae man malagu i maniluta gi za Notimranas it Chamorro luta tinian za saipan. Perou fandanya za pata kontra. Ta kontra i ferolis. I U.S. District Court ni masea fa'pa ro ma'chowipni perou ma'omutitni idiretsu ta za ni irensota. Hamzoo u gogogo senador kun todo imaga lohi za ni segundu magaloi. Debiri unfandanya zunfana gotti konai za nasiguru na na meguramzu. Kana usota todo i fetso'gu gi nugapsa. Ti naong maigoo sa duru i ferolis ma stopto bau. Si ga mata titizi gi talent pa'ma seamono para be honau put pa'monu gaegidzu. Lanana klosin tauta tauta gis. Ko magai na duku dumoku si ano durau. Tu hongi estainosa. Puti ma'chowginosa pori u sasanganofaimi no'ga'ye. Za upolu sia, upontasia estagi edda. Nasoni ana ma'plontau oi. Siya pa'gu ta guaduki. I edda za ta totni za ta tonu siya popa. Ta na ta ofut siya popa. Nasoni ana perou ma'gu bedne. Za pa'siya perou dinisponi edit Chamorro. Chamorro estae? Ti beseri ano. Za hamzoo loke gi man takilo. Debiri un ekunu ki tauta. Puti mismu it Chamorro. Sa hita, hita i tauta tauta nu. Za estabe sa'anga amzu. Anginun nisita adzuru gini ni itauta. Sukka Chamorro pa'ti man Chamorro. Estan megi man mahongi ni ofa bidahu. Be organs sia za ben sa'anga nisha. Na'yan za monu. Ni unisita adzuru. Be nasiguru na mangai gi genon za maseamono. Put hafa anpuntu tehi za pun defendi. Ikutura za ni lingoi. I rensa. I henangi ani diretsu. Pesh estabe sa'anga si ga duru itauta man manyentti. Za masa onu todo. Za estabe sa'anga taidinku gaywood. Anestama na olumisti zuni idota Resolution ni para ben koncho. Adaya sa ti ben nanga opman. Sempi ben gaegi talu genon gi kontun solengi kontun tasi. Ki ochu bondani kotin mi'zu. Sa ben afana ekunu kamzuna ti manositanirasta. Hogu pun ekunu ki ti hita it Chamorro itauta tauta nu ben ekunu ka'esta. Fan patiki lai ni masea perou senonani. Hi ri tauta na. Tiputinisopara ta ekunu esti. I lai i rulingni ni madusea. Chogui todo ni gi asinamizu. Ni pun kontra esti. Za guau be gaegi ifetsa. Anginun nisita. Be organi tauta. Estae man ma'ata. Za olum tali ko ofa midzongya esti. Angin ma'fa tauta. Sukka tunsa'anga niu. Lo estae sempi in reporter na ma'fa tautaye. Ben afat tauta sia tati sa sempi ben bi re tati genon. Za pa'gu na bayu tumana sempi masmegi po'fatu. Hongi. Sa sempi be si ga be kentusisha. I Facebook za masea itauta perou si ga po'akentus za mana tutungu rofa i guaha. Edza.
Sisus Maasi. Sisus Maasi, talu. Mr. Munoz, Frank Munoz.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senoras dan senor. Finenina be sa'anga amzu. Matuzu gini pa'bi suputi. In support of your Resolution 51, 52, and everything else that has to. Samoru zu by birth. Fin danyalgun Samoru. To matatuzu kyesa na shon Samoru zu. Ti ma'nyalzu ma'atai. Ti ma'nyalzu mumu lo be pasensia za uwe ekunu iman iluta gwinni. Malamku praya dan manobin. Za gus ga'isinsia ungan. Man manyentti todo. Everybody's feeling it, eh? Masea senti sa it hurts. It's like a betrayal. I am all in support of all the testimony here ni maniluta, our brothers and sisters, eh? And especially more power to my brothers and sisters who are here, who are probably in line for and are probably possibilities of standing and fighting for our rights, our human rights. Anyway, I wanted to let go a little bit of my feelings, my sentiments. Put si Dave Davis. I know Dave Davis. I know he's a retired military man. Utunga naritira. Za distiki ezil Chamorro landros malingua no inasondan, eh? Lo anapinitizu. He hurt me because he forgot one thing. That as we were working with the military and locu, we had a very good relationship. Moni na inenun. Sa when they have problems up in the Air Force, on the Navy, man ha'lamam ni locu and we were helping. We were working together to save their children, to save their enlisted men. I miss that. I love that. Ugok wezazu, and that is our government and the federal, the military side. We were in hand-in-hand, working together to help fix our problems. He really hurt me. And I don't care if he's listening. If he's listening, he better hear me out. You broke my heart, Dave Davis. I feel you betrayed me because our primary objective in this island as Samoros and people of this island is to help one another, to work together. Nobody is hungry. Now we have homeless, but we are all working together to fix this problem. He has nothing to do with that. He refuses to have anything to do with humanitarian acts. So if he wants to fight, we'll fight. I'm not saying guns and roses, but we have leaders that we elected to stand up and fight with the governor, lieutenant governor, fifteen senators, and the majority support of the people of this island. Plus, we have some legal counsels that are willing to assist, which is all good. Thank you very much for giving me this time. And more power to Lu Saludu para amzu todo. Biba Chamorro!
Donkulu na Sisus Maasis, Senor Munoz. Dan todo, pa'gu, si Dr. Palomo.
Sisus Maasis, dan si Rosa, por favor. Za hufinenina na bayu gago pinisu. Ni manautauta ni man mo'na ki hita. Na bayu kuentus pa'gu. Kosaki dangin hafaguaha ilekku ni ti dinansi pa'nu ti ma'pereu hinasan momi u manai dispensation. Bayu finu English and bayu finu Chamorro. Sa enigi u pitisi gi pa'gu na tempo.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, but before I begin, I would like to ask permission from our ancestors, the ancient Chamoros, to please bear with me and to give me permission to speak. And if I in any way say anything that is contrary to what they believed, I ask for forgiveness. I will speak in both languages, Chamorro and English. They are the official tongues of this island. And it is imperative, and my sincere belief and commitment, that everyone on this island of Guam, that many people call and claim paradise, be bilingual in at least Chamorro and English. Everyone, whether you are a native inhabitant or a visitor. Thank you, Vice Speaker Tirlahi, for letting me know about this this morning. I'm glad I got up extra early so I could read my messages. I am thankful for technology. I am ashamed to say, but I will admit that if I had not gotten your texts, I will not be here. And then I'll be reading about it in the paper, but I'd rather be a part of it. I don't participate in many battles. I choose my battles. And at this age, I think we have to because we don't have as much energy as we used to. Sisus Maasi, Vice Speaker Tirlahi. Saginin i tinigemugi tex. Na matuzo gwinni komo tiutaita zatikahulu zutauta zeltaita i texmo. Pa'sempe taygizu gwinni loganaku na bayu gaegi gwinni za bisao no gwinni na movimentu za gof importante. Anehumaha no magi u fa'isin maissa zu. Sa hafa na bayu gaegi gwinni. Ko pudi hasa'anga nizu si Vice Speakers and Chair. Esti nakumitea si Tirlahi. Pa'ko guaha mas importante gi kurasonnu ni tabiatu sa singan. I asked myself on my way over here, why am I going to be present? What's my reason? Do I have a personal interest in this? Of course I do. That really is a question that needs no answer. But I wanted to dwell into my innermost thoughts and the deepest part of my heart to come up with a reason. One of my answers is the fact that, as many of you all have been sitting here for hours and are probably have grumbling, if not gurgling, if not groaning stomachs, as well as the people before us, Sisus Maasi, for bearing with all of this. But this is extremely important. One of the things that I am grateful for today is to hear the thoughts, although I've heard many of your thoughts, those of you who have come before our prestigious audience, senators. However, it's always good to be reminded. I ulu na rason ni gaegigi kurasonnu pa'gu na matuzo magi iparabayu ekunu. Todo ilos prohimus, todo itauta man hobin za man amku ni manguentus pa'gu na ha'ani. Gof nisisa'you na tafan mana fanhasu di nuebu. Ni hafasha man malolofan za hafagai gi kurasonniha. Sa gof sadikit madmalefa. My position on both of these resolutions is affirmative. I support both of them. The latter one, and again, I'm pretty much very faithful to my feelings. I'm not so sure the latter one, why I would support it at this point. But you know, I'm a woman who, I'm a woman, so I'm free to change my mind. And I will use that to my advantage. Because you know, that's the cliche, isao niha, right? That's what people say. Pesh nangaza bayu usa loke. Sa importante. Lo ifinenina na nareselashon 51, 34. Azu hugof suputi. I support 3154 wholeheartedly. And that one, I won't dwell too much on it because a lot has been said. Ti bayu kuentus megi put azu, megi esta man masangan. Lo esti para bayu sangan put esti. Guaha estae sumangan na pet sigi mo'na. Atuka ilenyaa ilikniha ze kwa haji iniha.
Gwaha esta sumangan na petsi gi moona, atuka ilenya, ilikniha, ze kwa hadi iniha gwinu.
Even if they say, but I'm not so sure who they are, natufalofan gi kongresu, pa gi koti, that's not the point. The point is that we do something, the point is that we don't sit and chat and talk and demonstrate and do whatever it is that people do to show their support or non-support. The point is that we do something, and when we are rejected, we move on, and we move on, and we move on. There are enough legal minds in our community who are willing to help us out, because for some of us, it isn't about the money, it isn't about their reputation, whether they're going to be the top-notch lawyer, or the top-notch senator, or the top-notch governor, or the top-notch lobbyist. The issue is commitment, that they believe in what it is that they are pursuing, that they are seeking.
Ti put salapi esti, ti put hadi para uma stat kilo, na abugao, pa gobentnu, pa senador, pa lobbyist, samangubmetu di lobbyists. Ihinasu, estina na kinalamtin, put hafa para iminaule itauto imaniamoru.
I don't want to use the phrase "the people of Guam", because the people of Guam consist of not just Chamoros, it consists of a lot of ethnic and language and cultural groups. So we should, if our intent is for the Chamoros, pues por favor ta usa imaniamoru.
Za utuwa na gwagi zahita, kalan man ma'ao'anyo, ni anginilekta para imaniamoru, este hajti para itodi itauto Guam.
But you know, it's commitment. I told, I mentioned I pick my battles now, and this is one battle that I will stay on track, and I promise that I will continue to follow up with it, and I offer whatever assistance I might be able to offer. The last one I would like to make is, in this pursuit of moving forward after denial, after denial, after denial, it is very true that laws are made by man, it is also very true that man can change these laws, and it is even more true that laws, that man has changed laws.
To di tempo debrita asu, da zangin sihi moona atuka man masangan ni ti sina, ti sina, ti sina ngi ngayan, ta sihi pi vitisi gi moona, sa gi gi hingen geku itauto fumatitinas ilai, itauto lo kui sihi hatu laika ilai, za gof magahet itauto, manu lalaika ilai, megena lai man matulaika.
So with that in mind, this may be the time, I mean, I might not be here to enjoy whatever comes out of this, but my children's children, hopefully I get more, and the children of all those that are here, including those that are out there, perhaps they will in their lifetime, it is a battle.
Da zangin sina polu zasiha umiresi, polu zasiha umiresi hafa para uhuzu nginin esti, sa atuka gwahu ti bumiresi, lo komusina ifama gonu, za ni fama gonija, za ni fama gon todo esti siha na los prohimus gwinu, pues dinansi moona.
The last point I would like to make, I think I said that already, right, is this, and then I will move on for the others. Let's pursue whatever avenues we may have and not stick to one path, and in the paths that are chosen, this is something new that I've learned as I continue to study, because I'm still trying to find out exactly what it is in the world, I want to contribute to Guam. Let's start thinking about pursuing paths that include the indigenous Chamorro perspective. There is such a thing out there that talks about indigenous theoretical frameworks. Let's try to think of those paths that fulfill the theoretical perspective of indigenous peoples, and let's try those avenues simultaneously, that we are trying, the frameworks that we have been trying, the frameworks that we have been educated in, because you know, my hunch is, the more paths and diverse paths we take, and the more we apply our indigenousness to some of the paths, I think people will be more wanting to listen to us. This may be the time.
Pues zangin tahahasu, differentes na panela na sina ta na sihi moona estina kinalamtin, put esti i determination, por favor. Ni ta ta na halum ihinasun samoru ni taimanu moon, zangin dalala gwinu si na nahu biya, za si ta ta'u biya, pa imanai na niha, hafa taimanu moon ihinasun niha, nipata kegana estina na situasyon. Hafa da ta na fandanya moona za todi i sistema americano, if you will, i western method, da talii fan sa ileku la entri mas ma huhungo za madii i sistema itauto, i mismu tauto imaniamoru, sinaha mas ma ekungo. Pues, hamzu i representan ma mi, hamzu ina ngongo ku, para idia moona estina kinalamtin. Bayen fanogi, fanatu para hamzu, lo ingagago lo kui hamzu para infanatu para hammi.
You are our representatives, we stand up for you, and thus, we ask you to stand up for all of us.
Here da bayuna fa'pu ni esti, por favor, zangin taza gwa, ni ta ta kantai fanogit samoru, por favor. Fanogit samoru.
Si Dus Mas. Si Dus Mas, Dr. Paloma. Desiree? Shannon, are you going to testify? Desiree, Shap, Lisa, Jonathan Glaser? Catherine Matu, Marla, okay. Si Dus Mas. Okay, Desiree, por favor.
Half a day, senators, si Dus Mas, for this opportunity to respond to this resolution. Therese, thank you for introducing it. There's not much I can say that has not been said, I think everyone has summed up many of my feelings, but I will say that I'm here to offer my support for this resolution, because I understand that dependence in any way and form is an impediment to social justice and peace. Self-determination is the right of the colonized, it's not an opportunity for everybody who benefits from our repeated colonization to weigh in on our future and what happens to our island, that's not what it's created for. Self-determination is to restore justice. We cannot restore justice by asking our oppressor to fix it, it just doesn't work that way. And so I just also want to remind everybody that when we vote against self-determinization, we actually vote for the continued marginalization of our Chamorro people and our culture. It's a vote for the further destruction of our land and our environment, and our people currently fall victim to the highest rates of poverty, violence, preventable diseases, and imprisonment on the island. These problems are the result of systematic oppression through colonial structures that fail to fully recognize the presence and histories of our people. We cannot restore justice by asking the people who created these structures to fix it for us, and that's, I don't have much to say except that I support this, and I think it's important, and I have to get back to work, and I have to pick up my baby, but thank you for this opportunity, and I just also, one quick thing I wanted to say was, thank you for your patience, and I know that it's really easy sometimes to dismiss messages and activism when it's not packaged in ways that are comfortable to us, or ways that seem inappropriate, or even uncool, but that's an easy, lazy way to be, and I really ask that, instead of paying attention to the packaging, that we focus on the truth of the messages embedded within those pleas to be heard, and I'm very grateful for all of you, so thank you very much.
Si Dus Mas, Desiree, si Dus Mas. Shannon?
Half a day, senators, Vice Speaker Ungul Kapske. My name is Shannon Gudey McManus, I'm the daughter of Stephen Komacho Castro, familiar in Lotu, from the village of Chalampago, we emigrated to Agit, and Andressino Obak Sangaba, from the hamlets of Ngard and Blilio in the Republic of Belau. I am here as a daughter of Micronesia to stand in solidarity and support of both bills with the self-determination plebiscite and with the Chamorro Land Trust. My father's family, along with many Chamoros who suffered and continue to suffer displacement in their own home, has yet to receive land since applying in 1995. My mother's family is a different story of displacement and immigration after World War II. Her family came here to the island of Guam from Palau, and she has invested her life as an educator for the last thirty-plus years, but she has made it adamantly clear that this plebiscite is not her right, or the right of Palauans who came here, or the right of any non-Chamoros who call this place their home. We celebrate our independence as a Palauan community every year here in Guam, at Paseo, as well as our Filipino Cababaians, while our Chamorro people continue to celebrate liberation, or rather, our recolonization by the US. The people of the Republic of Belau had their turn and made their choice, it is now the Chamorro people's right and your duty to uphold that right. It is not an easy burden to bear, and we just thank you for taking up that cause. I just wanted to read something really quickly that my grandfather's brother wrote, he's a Palauan author, it's called "Microchild". "Microchild. In the emerging island nations where multinational footprints have crisscrossed the souls of the indigenous and their children, in addition to their cultural heritages drowning in a sea of exploitation, the fruits of the future become transplanted in its native soils, as if through artificial insemination. The native cultures have been marred with importations and assimilation of foreign enigmas. Within this dissonant milieu, our microchildren are yet nurtured with greater hope for tomorrow." "Alas, the abundance of our land and sea becomes second to imported luxuries, and inferiority complex walks in and weakens our future heroes, and further mutilates the sacred ground of cultural and traditional destiny, where our forefathers consecrated and affixed and confirmed as a guiding star to the micro-nations. But the tide of time has been altered, and the children of the island nations with matured guidance from you, our leaders, our elders, and the world around them. One day, we will be able to reach maturity, and will be soundly proud of being islanders and members of mankind, with even greater hope of achieving peace and harmony for the sake of brotherhood of man and his land. Our elders only see visions of the world that would have been, our youth dream dreams of things to come, because a child is one day father of a man."
Thank you, si Dus Mas, Kumal Musulang. Si Dus Mas, Shannon Mans. Alyssa. Alyssa Klavea.
Yes. Buenas in half a day, Vice Speaker and Senators. Thank you for allowing me to provide my testimony, my name is Alyssa Klavea, from the village of Jotnia. The last time that I testified, I was seventeen, it's great to see new, bright, and young leaders. It's interesting how when I was seventeen, I was fighting for my children before they were even born, I have none, and it's interesting again that I am now fighting as a young Chamorro woman and a soon-to-be mother. I cannot express to you how much this pains me. Growing up, I always heard the elders talk about the military constantly taking our land and not wanting to give it back. There are lands that the military have that are not being put to use, you see buildings rotting and abandoned, how can they not think about the families who deserve to be there? Before my grandmother passed, before she went to heaven, she fought a long and hard battle to get our land back into Gotching. With the help of the community, Angel Santos, and our passion to fight for what is ours, we won. My grandmother left me land so that I need to teach my children to cultivate, to teach my children to respect the land, to teach them about our ancestors and how they lived on that soil and flourished. This is a way to teach my children to separate technology and enjoying a Chamorro life. I want them to be able to lay on the cot the way that I did, and rest while hearing the jungle sway, hear the ocean far off in the distance, allow them to sleep knowing they are safe, knowing that they are secure. I want them to climb trees to pick fruit like I did, I want all Chamorro children to experience what our land has to offer. My other half and I, we have a dream, where our children are playing in the yard and I'm cooking kuru with vegetables from our yard and our garden, having fresh calamansi for lemonade and fresh duni for fenadeni. I want our Chamorro children to be able to chase the same dream if they choose, but what happens... But what happens if there's no more land? I am not just hurt, I am disappointed. As a mother-to-be, as a Chamorro, a native of Guahan, it is my duty to fight for our children and the future generations to come. I want to pass on my grandmother's legacy by leaving land for my children and so forth. This land belongs to the Chamorro people. There will be none left if we don't fight. Please, let's not forget how America took our land from our ancestors. The military would knock on our ancestors' doors, and if they could not provide a signature, they would dip their thumb in ink and force them to give up their land. This was more than just surrendering a thumbprint. This was their livelihood. This was their way of surviving. It was illegal for America to confiscate lands that were not a U.S. territory, hence making us an unincorporated U.S. territory today. I feel betrayed, and I know that I am not alone. Our ancestors were gruesomely forced to give up their land, and today we are slapping their face with the recent publicite ruling. Let's not disrespect their fight. Let's not disrespect the indigenous people of Guam. Let's not disrespect my grandmother, Esther Estacchio Eklavea, who fought long and hard to provide this right to her family. It is our right. I believe in our elected leaders, and thank you for joining us in our fight. I support Bills 51 and 52. Situ Smasi.
Situ Smasi, Alyssa. Okay, that's going to conclude our testimony on Resolution 51, and I thank you all again for your patience. I know many of you have already testified on Resolution 52, but if there's anyone else, I'm going to read the names of those who signed up to testify for Resolution 52. And we will hear you if you are here. Tet Nelson, Bob Pelkey, Francisco Mesa, Rudolph Villaverde, Saina Ofting, Magarahin Parget, Pasente Garidu, Rumbel Benaventi, Lasha Casil, Enrique Torres, Ray Luhon, Lacrisia Castro Santos, Tressa Diaz, Jose Garidu, Manny Duñez, Maga Aniti, Josette Canata, Trini Torres, Mike Phillips, John Ogun, Hope Cristobal, Ronald Leguatnia, Ned Pablo, Robert Celestio, Carmen Casper Bauer Nieves, Catherine McCollum, Shannon Manis, Jonathan Glaser. I think most of these names, I've heard you testify. Do you need to put in any additional testimony for Resolution 52? Resolution 52 is a resolution that supports that the government of Guam not enter into a consent decree without approval of the Guam Legislature and the governor of Guam regarding the recent threatened lawsuit proposed by the United States Department of Justice over the Chamorro Land Trust Act. The Department of Justice sent a letter to the governor in January threatening a lawsuit claiming that the Chamorro Land Trust Act is in violation of the Federal Housing Act, and it is discriminatory. And they gave the government of Guam until January 31 to respond, or they would file their lawsuit. And one of the things that they asked for in response was a consent decree as to the discriminatory nature of the Chamorro Land Trust and injunction to stop it from further action pending their conclusion. So this resolution was really just to give support. We hear the legislature cannot control directly how the AG or the governor is going to respond in a lawsuit, but we would like, we've seen many, many consent decrees here and after the fact, after they're already entered into, and we don't want that to happen again in this case. We want to be sure that all the people of Guam are aware that what their government is considering a consent decree and that they can weigh in on that. I think it's very crucial, as we've heard testimony earlier, that we not agree that our Chamorro Land Trust is discriminatory at this time. And consent decree is really the same thing as an agreement. We're entering into an agreement. We're consenting. We are agreeing to what they have said without a fight. And so obviously, you know, there's potential that the Department of Justice will file a lawsuit. And so this resolution is really just to come from the legislature to show support for the governor and the attorney general to fight for the Chamorro Land Trust. So that's what we have asked your support. My colleagues have asked that they get additional input, and so that's why we had this hearing today. Yes, Ofti? So on Resolution 52, thank you very much.
Unalay, enegi Resolution 52 ungul, so anadu no in support tenam. Engana, ene i, po le Chamorro Land Trust, gage i abogao, si Mike Phillips. Gage talu si wes, si BJ Cruz, who is the speaker right now. Hafagitatina tempo nimapaasai esti Chamorro Land Trust. Hafana kaman haring for the rarisa ma opma faisinit po esti nalay. Po da faasti, tulekna gui federal land trust. Tulekna Chamorro Land Trust. Faada guis masasengan, Gomenian Land Trust. Hasu Chamorro Land Trust. Ay tu federal land trust, ay tu Gomenian Land Trust. Esti Chamorro Land Trust para hita nimantauta tanu gui negi tanota. Hita ni tada tanota mangagi guihi. But kade ma tu, bora sengsum sigya masanganihuna, faasti na, na tauta man yasaga guihi. De kun tualfa, uinfaisin i director. Na am mineston Chamorro eviction paper jobin tegui tegtu uniju. Jobi ta eviction shana tauta hujung gui negi tanu. Peis masanganiam na tisinya sa ilay. Hafana nalay napamausa ni Chamorro Land Trust. Afad, afad badanuniju estapagu tinte tegui. Mahu unuka ginagamnianiman hujung pagu ilan ejipomacheksha itanu. Peis unukna, guahu, amniyasagaw si Danny Jackson, esto ma grandfather halu, seven acres gi pagat manila. Peis u hunu estatodu ma survey. Peis u hunu gi, gi, sentetekusha, na ofing adaya mdu, sa taguina niju gi gi Chamorro Land Trust. Le to, ha? Taguina isagaw, ya sagaw? La mi it, ko matuli itanu. De le ekwa, but ni sitan untek enau. De ku estegaigi, estegaigi i, ipapit, estama fitma i, todudu afen na halu, man ma tu ma visitaha, matuli tod information. Ey, afamas malagonia, gas, binafanwaha manayamno, gi tatina tempo manayasagaw lease agreement. Esti na lease agreement, manayegui po fitma for half an acre. Seven acres ingegite yulu gi Chamorro Land Trust, stabapata arindo. Peis maduti, ma pegagat, ma pegagatati gi Chamorro Land Trust, seven acres esti ar. Peis aru de segrin acres po manayam half an acre, na para in mumudzi, de engana i kausa, manayasagaw tatini, i seven acres, peis ma grandfather halu. But esti lelikna, hafana manayegui lease agreement, binfitma, okay? Binfitma, po fitma, manayini lease agreement, mungi tanu. Like, for example, malefan jobi na yo no, esti dijoku lease agreement, john, kila esti appointment, I mean apartment, da mungi apartment, tatata apartment, zaga gi style lease agreement. Peis edzigenen, mimumudzi talu mas, mungi edji half an acre ni masanganap, ma di DC, Mr. Jackson. Estapagu tatatazat. Mas esti leliku, tamumudzi esti i, afan i federales talu napapanhalu po esti fair housing, halu gi Chamorro Land Trust. Hita nimantauta tanu. Hita nimant Chamorro. Ta faman haksa guma, dat no, antis na tauta, edji efin no, afapapanhalu, tadi federales apafa ma faisinit no, ni sitanu guidelines, peis esti na guma. Ey, come on, man. My ancestor made these houses. We built these houses. Then you're going to come in and say, Mrs. Jackson, enona guma ninhaksa ni sitanu du de ogasa, it's not under a guideline. What's wrong with that picture? Edzabi sangan da hungan, estosanganak, da ninashon Chamorro da hungan. We do agree with that paper that, Vice Speaker, the resolution, da biba Chamorro.
Biba. Situ Smasi, ofing, Tana Manda. Tanci Harrow. Okay, Harrow, you may proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and members of the 34 Guam Legislature. I'm back. You know, the Chamorro Land Trust is very, very dear to my heart, and I'll tell you why. I am one of the only living persons today, with Mike Phillips back there, who's actually alive, who wrote the rules and regulations for the Chamorro Land Trust Act. It was Ed Benaventi, the late Senator Andrew Santos, Alvin Duñez, myself, and the help of Maget, and of course, the senior Senator Nelson at the time. So it's real dear to my heart, and that's why I decided to come up here. The Chamorro Land Trust was passed in the 34 Guam Legislature by the visionary Paul Baudalio, Paul J. Baudalio, now 45 years ago, almost 45 years ago. And it withstood the test of time. So you are now in a position with a fiduciary responsibility to protect whatever lands is left, that it's placed to the trust for Chamorro people. So I ask that this body do whatever you could do to protect the Chamorro Land Trust Act, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Now, I remember back in 1995 when we had the public hearing, when we wrote the rules and regulations. We had the biggest public hearing in legislative history. We had over 1,000 people come down to Adaloo, and we picked Adaloo as a venue because there was no other place at the time that could hold that many people. So we put tents up, and the governor at the time didn't agree to have it down there. Governor Carle Guterres, he didn't, but we forced him to. Senator, you were part of the legislature at the time. You remember that. We had over 1,000 people come and testify that we should implement the Chamorro Land Trust Act. And it was just so touching how our people came together in the thousands, came together in the thousands. And so many thousands today have benefit. And even though the property, some of the property don't have power or water, they still have benefit because they're able to farm, they bring their own water in, they purchase generators, and they're living off the land. So let's not stop fighting. Let's not stop fighting. Do what we could do to preserve the trust. Thank you very much. Situ Smasi. Parabamos todos.
Situ Smasi. Tana Manda Santos.
When I start this, many lu, senador, dan senadoras, pagana ani ana husenti, ja u hunu po esti na public hearing, ha epukjuk para bei faktu, sa Chamorrojuk, da debidibai van danyajan nimant Chamorro nimant inefektanu esti na suntupat problema. Guau nanandifuntu angitsantus ni amumudzipo esti land trust para imant Chamoros nimantaitanu da kosaki u fan mas libyanu zangin guaha tanu niya para u fan manatsagomania para ifamiliania. Hafana kada patafan libyanu guaha koncharuta. Senador Therese Terlay, hu agadesi na une introduci tori estidos na resolucion, hu supoti tori estidos. Hu desesiana gimannam maylana tempo, situus hu ubendisihi tori simant Chamoros kosaki tafan la libyanu po esti i Chamorro Land Trust. Situ Smasi.
Situ Smasi, talu for everybody who has testified today. Attorney Phillips is here. Does the panel have any questions for him? We promised we would get back to him. Attorney Phillips, I do have one question if I may ask you. My colleagues are concerned about the timing of these resolutions, whether they are necessary to be passed today versus a month from now versus a week from now, and if you, do you have any comment on that?
Well, my recommendation, full due respect, is with the pressure placed upon other government leaders and the intent, I think, of all this is for you to be heard and to a large extent for the people of Guam to be heard. And I think it's of the utmost urgency that you pass the resolutions as soon as reasonably possible. You know, when I learned that the threat had been made in the past, the deadlines have been passed, and you have no idea what's going to happen in the interim, of course, there'll be questions, for example, you know, in hindsight, of course, why did we delay? If there was truly that resolve, if we heard, at least what I heard today, that at least as far as the people are concerned, the message is unified, it's clear, I think it remains urgent. I think that explains some of the, what appears to be efficient movement towards the drafting and the hearing of the resolutions, and the response by the community, I think, matched it, if maybe not exceeded it. And so because of that, I think it would be, quite frankly, reckless to wait and hope that nothing happens. There's nothing to gain that I can see from waiting and a lot to lose if you're one day late.
Situ Smasi.
And if I could also just state for the record, I think I speak for, I'm sure everyone that testified that intended this and may not have said it. I said that I'm testifying in favors, in favor, excuse me, of Resolutions 51 and 52. And of course, I didn't know till the end that they weren't both being heard at the same time, because to me, it's really the same thing. So I just want to make sure that the record reflects that, and I think I speak for a lot of people that testified earlier also.
Situ Smasi. Any, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? I thank you so much very, oh, Senator Torres.
I just pulled something up on the internet, and I'll just state the quote, and maybe you can use this. It says here, "But most land is held in the trust of the blank people. So yes, there is a legal basis for what we would fight flat-out called discriminatory practices." I'll share this with you at the end if you wish to come and approach me. I don't want to put this on, you know, in the public, okay? And if you have a question, I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, my colleagues, and thank you, everybody. This, I'm going to call this public hearing adjourned. The time is now 2:23. Thank you very much. Situ Smasi.